I guess, and then we'll do a public comment after the millage.
We can do that, Mayor, as long as everybody's okay with the current millage rate where it's at. Keep in mind, you can't go up. It's hard to go up tonight, but you can go down. I wouldn't recommend you go down. The budget's balanced where it sits. So you're right, Mayor. If you want to go ahead and approve the millage rate, you can do that first, and then we can do budget presentation.
Okay. I mean, is anybody, everybody comfortable with the current millage rate?
So we still have the opportunity to discuss kind of how that's being allocated?
Yeah.
From here. Okay.
Yes. Okay. All right. Anybody want to speak on the millage rate? Okay. If not, need to read this script here. In accordance with the truth in millage trim requirements, the city must set the tentative millage rate and advise the property appraiser of the tentative millage rate, rollback rate, date, time, and place of final budget hearing. The tentative millage rate is 4.1876, which represents a 10.87% increase over the rollback rate, millage rate of 3.7100. The final budget hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, September 14th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. A motion to approve. That a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bankson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. So we'll go ahead and we'll open it up for public comment before we get into the budget. Okay. Come on now, Mike.
Mayor, I have a question. So do a public comment at the beginning if you'd like as well. I think based on trim, we probably should do one at the very end, after all the budgets presented, before you do, because it's treated just like an ordinance.
Okay.
Where we have the public hearing, and then you have any, or you have the presentation and public hearing.
Okay, okay. Yep. All right. Let's do that.
Do it after that way.
Thank you.
So Mayor, Commissioners, this is your first public hearing. As you know, from the proposed budget hearing, we have to set two budget hearings by law. We have one tonight, and then we have one also on the 14th, which is next Wednesday, at 6:00 here in City Hall Council Chambers. It will be the final budget hearing, where you will adopt the final trim and the final budget, citywide budget for FY23. So I wanted to say that first of all. The first thing I want to do is I want to go through, kind of give the public an overview for those people, those who aren't here tonight. First, I want to thank the finance staff, because what you see before you tonight is something we've never had here in Apopka. It's a great thing. It's more transparency. So the public can go online. You can drill down to every one of these budgets. You can go all the way down to every line and see what's in every line. It's also active. What that means is as the staff makes adjustments or as the staff updates on, in the financials, it updates on the website. So any changes that you've seen from a workshop to today are incorporated. I want to show this slide because I want you to see how we got to where we are today. If you recall, we had three budget workshops. Those departments and spreadsheets that you saw are here, and they are active. The changes that you asked for during those, during the proposed budget, you asked me to add a training position. That position has been added in this budget. And if you go back to those workshops, you'll see it wasn't in the workshops, but it is now included in the first public hearing. So you'll be able to see that those changes that you've asked or requested, they are updated, and you'll see them in this live. So as changes are made or updated, they become live on the website. The good part about the website, and we'll go through a few as we move through, you'll be able to also look at different views. Some people are interested in just over a top level. They just want to see how much is personnel, how much is operating, how much is capital. Some people are interested in seeing how much goes to public safety, how much goes to utilities, how much goes to recreation. You'll be able to also, based on your needs or based on what you'd like to see, drill down to that level, which is very, very important. This data also, keep in mind, when we get to the final public hearing and you adopt the final millage in your budget, if you recall last year, when finance and Jessica, they brought up and showed you the final budget book, that had everything updated, done, adopted. That will also post here. And so someone will actually be able to go through and see from beginning to end how we got to where we are. We've never had that capability before. That's a great tool because you're able to see what started in a workshop and where do we end in the final budget. So you'll be able to see the whole process and go through every sheet and every change. So that, those are two things I wanted to point out. I want to thank Jessica and her team. Can't thank them enough. As you know, we've had new software. When you have new software, it's very difficult, takes a lot of hours, a lot of time. Jessica was, I think has turned into an accountant. She's our procurement person, as you know, but she helped to lead the team with the budget as well. So I think she's learned some nice accounting tools as well. But I have to thank the whole team. Couldn't do it without our team. As Mayor stated earlier, in the council meeting this afternoon, Gladiamere is leaving us, as you know. Unfortunately, it's, we're very sad because she's done a great job. But like Mayor said, she has built a team that is so good, and it's functioning and working really well, that it is my job to make sure we find somebody that won't disrupt this team. Somebody that will be good, that can come in and keep this team on track and focused. Because Gladiamere has built a phenomenal team. They all know their functions. They work well together. And as you know, in the budget, we've given some positions, extra positions in finance. So I think it's important that we highlight that. I will miss her. As you know, finance is my thing. I will miss her. She's done a good job. But I fully understand family comes first. So I wanted to say that first of all, and make sure that we thank all our staff. Jessica is instrumental in her staff, but it really takes all the staff. The departments had to work with them. Every department had to be involved, putting their numbers in. It took a lot of time. It took a lot of meetings. And I think it's important that we commend all the staff for building this. So I'm going to start by kind of showing you on the website so the public can see as well. We had, how did we get to where we are today? We had three workshops. We went through all the departments. They went through all their line items. We did an overall budget at the third, at the end of the third workshop. You set a proposed millage rate and a proposed budget, general fund budget, back in July. All of the property tax owners have been noticed through the, noticed a proposed property tax, and so through the property appraiser's office. So we have met all the requirements to get to this point today. So you're at your first public hearing on September the 7th, tonight. Here you'll see different, we have the budget message. I'm not going to read that and go through that. I'm going to go through actually the budget and all the highlights, which will cover the message. But the budget message is basically just what it is. It's a message. It's a short, quick overview for those people who want to actually go through and just read, hey, how's each fund impacted? What are the most significant things in each fund? It's a high level, but it's for the reader to be able to see what happened in each fund, what changed in each fund. Citywide, all funds, that's where we're going to go through tonight. I want to go here. I want to give you, I'm going to start with the big picture and show you the whole city budget and how it's balanced. And then I'm going to pick, I'm going to select on some of the major funds, the general fund, utility fund, and go through some of those. I can show you the highlights and show you significant things that have changed within the major funds. There are some smaller funds, like special assessment funds. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail for those unless you want to. So if we get there and there's something you want to talk about, we can go through those as well. Capital improvement program, that's your five-year capital improvement program. It is still in progress. There's a couple areas that still aren't completed, but the first year is completed, which is the year that you're adopting. That's the year that you have in your budget tonight. The four years out, Jessica and her team continue to work on building those years in a five-year capital plan, and it should be up in the next day or two. So the full amount will be there. But the five-year plan is a plan. That's exactly what it is. You only are adopting the first year of the plan. That's what you're appropriating in the budget. The other four years are, is actually a plan that we use for future planning and future budgets. And then authorized number of positions, that's where you will see where we've added positions in which department or which function. So that's just a quick overview for those people who want to see, hey, I want to see you add 22 people. Where are they being added? So you can see which departments or which function are being added. It's a high level. So I want to start first by going through all funds from citywide. So when you click on the website, you'll be able to see that the first picture you have is City Hall, and it says citywide budget review. So it shows you all, this is all of the budget put together in one, which is what you adopt. Tonight, you're not adopting one fund. You're adopting the whole budget for all the funds in one budget. You'll see you have a general fund, streets improvement fund, impact fee fund. This is your transportation, your water, sewer reclaim impact fees, fire, police impact fees are also included here, as well as recreation. Law enforcement funds, these are your special law enforcement trust funds. They have restrictions on them. It's going to be spent for certain purposes. This fund, every expenditure, pretty much every expenditure in these funds come back to you as a budget amendment. You see these on the consent agenda. Grants fund, we have a separate fund for our grants so we can track our grants and keep our grants in one area. So that's what that fund does. That's what we have that fund for. Stormwater fund, just like it says, as you know, we talked about that in the workshops. That's the fund for all of your stormwater assessment. Utility operating fund, this is the fund you just approved the rate increase for, the operating rate. This is the fund where all of those, all of that budget is included in. Sanitation fund, this is the one Josh talked about, the rate increase you just approved for October 1st, 6%. That's this fund. The community redevelopment fund, it's already done. You had your meeting on that. The board adopted their budget. This budget matches exactly what that board, what the board adopted. It's just been included into this. We have to put it into the overall city budget so you approve one budget for the whole city. And then you have your special assessment fund. These are the funds, as you know, you have them on your agenda tonight. You have a few of those special assessments, resolutions that have to be heard because we have to be able to have the public hearing for the individuals that these assessments apply to. They have to be able to have a separate public hearing to be able to come and speak about these funds. So I'm going to go over all. So your FY23 budget, tentative, keep in mind it's tentative because tonight you will adopt a tentative budget, and then next Wednesday you will adopt the final budget. So it has a 12% increase over last year's budget, and it's balanced, all funds are balanced at $146,298,297. So that is your, that's the total citywide budget. It's a 12% increase over last year. If you recall, last year, our budget was $130,000, $130 million. Your millage rate, which you just approved, your tentative millage rate is set at 4.1876 per thousand of assessed value. That is the same millage rate. There's no change in the millage rate from the millage rate last year. Their tax base increased $917 million, one of the biggest we've ever seen. I will tell you, if not the biggest we've ever seen, almost a billion dollars in tax increase value and value assessed value, taxable assessed value. And that generates $3.6 million in additional revenue, that increase. The general fund, we are using some of the unassigned reserves, just set a reserve policy. We're using 1.4 of those reserves that are in that pot today. Even using the 1.4 of those reserves, we still sit at 25%. So you'll balance FY23, and you'll still maintain your 25% reserve. Number of positions, there are 22 new positions, and this is citywide. I'll go through those real quick. You have accountant, one. You have accounting clerk. You have a financial analyst. You have an HR specialist, one. You have six firefighters. You have a new district chief. I'm sorry, it's going to be a division chief. You have a new division chief, that's your train, chief. That's your training position you asked me to put into the budget. That is that position. That's your training position. You have two part-time, two new part-time school crossing guards. We have a new school, so we had to add crossing guards. You have a new park worker. This is the one we talked about was going to be the person that goes around to make sure the cities cap up, make sure things are picked up, make sure this person will be out in the community all the time. That's what, that's what their job will be, to make sure things are tidy up and dedicated to keeping the city clean. Multi-cool inspectors, you have two in your billing fund. Web content and social media analyst and information technology, there's a position we're adding. A GIS coordinator position, we're adding that in IT. You have two MS4 positions in stormwater, if you recall. We have to do that for regulatory compliance, so we've added those two positions in stormwater. You have a new cashier in utility billing to provide more customer service for our utility customers. And then in sanitation, you have a sanitation equipment operator that has been added. So you have 22 new positions. Twenty are full-time and two are part-time. The budget includes performance-based merit pay up to 6% for all full-time employees. I think that, that is where we have, you know, there was one year we had to go back to 3%. We are back at 6%. We have been for the last two years now. So that, that is included in the budget. Also here, if you recall, we talked about raising a lot of our positions to $15 an hour. That is included in this budget as well. So all of our positions will be, with the exception of some of our, a few of our seasonal, which are like splash pad and camp people, people that work in camp. There's a amount of money in that budget that the recreation director can use to hire certain positions that are seasonal. They only work just for a short period of time, but, but he has, if he has some good people, he has some discretion to be able to pay a little bit more than $13 or $14 an hour. But all of our, all of our other part-time positions that are regular part-time positions, they will be a minimum of $15 an hour. So everybody, we will have nobody under $15 an hour except a few seasonal people for camp or...
Yeah, so with the seasonal, I think we had talked about that during budget. Are they actually getting though an increase from what they were getting, or are they remaining the same?
So your regular part-time people, which are not, the only seasonal ones we really have now are camp, camp during camp time. Splash pad, that's a seasonal. But our regular, like our park rangers and our facilities, people that stay on regular, for the whole year, is a regular schedule, they will come to $15. The minimum will be $15 for those individuals. Now, Commissioner, we talked about the seasonal. So say I have a person that comes in that's a lifeguard or has a lot of experience, and I want to use them for camp. Well, it's hard to hire somebody for $13. But Bradley has in his budget an appropriation where he can hire, if they have experience, he can hire it for more than 15. Maybe you hire a lifeguard for 17, because that's what it takes to be competitive. So he has that ability to hire those individuals. But what I'm saying is outside of those seasonal, everybody else will be brought to the $15 minimum. We have to be there in 2016 anyway, so we're going to go ahead and get to that point now. It's included in here. There's also your pay. Your pay is based on ordinance, based on population. So the budget does include a, an increase in pay for your commissioners based on population growth. And so that's a formula that we do by ordinance that will be calculated, and you will see that in your first paycheck of the new year.
Do we include overtime?
No, unfortunately, the ordinance doesn't allow me to include overtime. But if that's something you'd like for us to bring back, we can look for that for you. So but, so keep that in mind. Another point I want to stop here and say too, that in FY21, when we had the downturn, I elected not to take a raise that year in my salary. As you know, Mayor did not, Mayor does not get an increase unless you approve that increase. I go back to my contract based on a formula in my contract, is how mine's calculated. But I want you to know, I've, I've foregone mine in '21 as a way to help during the tough times that we have with the city, and I elected to do that. Mayor, everybody else has had their increases. Mayor has not had an increase. So I'm kind of looking to you to let me know if you feel this is an appropriate time, that you feel he should have, we should give him some kind of an increase. It's all based on your, here's a set by city council in the budget. So that, keep that in mind as we move through here, if that's something you want to see. Yours is based on population formula. His is based on the wishes of the city council. If you feel that we should have an increase. I will leave that up to you to let me know what you, what you feel, if you feel we should do something. So capital costs that you have in this budget, public safety has, you have 17 new police vehicles. You have a fire engine, a new fire engine. Two ambulances are in this budget. Parks and recreation equipment improvements, almost a million dollars there that we're putting in. Information technology improvements. And then you have capital facility improvements, which are improvements to any of our facilities or major capital items. Street improvements, there are big street improvements in here, as there have been in the last couple of years. That's the area where we continue to put a lot of resources. New traffic signals, there are several in here. Street resurfacing, that program is in here again. Remember, we're taking a million dollars from the rescue dollars to put again another year into our resurfacing program because that's where we, our gas tax has a hard time keeping up, and we want to keep our resurfacing program on schedule. New sidewalks, there was some talk about sidewalks in the last meeting. There's money to do new sidewalks. So we have funding for that. And then also sidewalk repairs. We put significant money in here to do sidewalk repairs. I will tell you, you're going to see right now, Josh is trying to kind of do a little catch-up a little bit here, if you will, before this fiscal year ends. So you're probably going, you should see, I've seen plenty, but you'll see that we're doing some sidewalk improvements right now and some tree removal improvements now, so that he can kind of get caught up. So when he gets to the next year, he can stay up with the requests that we're getting from the community. But there is money for tree removal, and there's money for sidewalk repair in this budget. Lots of money for those. Your water, wastewater and reclaimed water, they're pretty much set every year based on your five-year plan. But also you heard Henry talked about those improvements, how the capital improvements are in there and how we're paying for those. And you just recently approved the rate increase that will help pay for those improvements. So health insurance is up 10%. You might say that's a lot, but I will tell you, having talked to some of our neighbors, that's a really good number. 10% is, some places have seen as much as 18 and 20%. So we've done pretty good in this area with PRM. You know, we've beat them up a little bit. As you know, we keep saying, we're going out and find a better price if you don't do something. They sharpen their pencils, and so I think, you know, it's good. That's good for, for us as well. Property liability and worker's comp insurance has increased 12%. That is just a multiplier of, based on our experience, based on, as you know, property insurance. There's formulas and ways to calculate those, but that is a 12% increase. It's not a huge number, but it's, it's an increase in the budget for coming here. So as you can see, in 2022, we were $130 million, and 2023 is $146 million. So there's a $16 million increase of 12 and 1/2% from one year to the next. So this slide shows you, you can see that the revenues, the proposed budget, we were still talking, we weren't balanced, because we were, as you remember, we were still moving. We were adding, we added position, we added training position and fire. So you can see there, we were a little out of balance on the proposed, but you can see your tentative budget is currently balanced, revenues and expenses are currently balanced at your millage rate. This, I wanted to kind of show you, you can kind of see where the significant increases are. I'm going to go into a general fund. When I get to a general fund, utility fund, those are the funds I want to actually go into more of a detail. This rolls everything up, so it's a little hard to see all of the parts and pieces. But this will show you basically how much money comes from each source. You can see that we received $29 million from taxes, which is our biggest revenue source for citywide outside of user fees of $35 million. So here you can see a picture that shows you almost 20% of the revenues that operate the city, citywide, come from taxes. Internal governmental is about 8%. Permits and special assessments are $7 million. Impact fees are $12 million. Got $12 million impact fees. $29 million of reserves you're using. Keep in mind, that's citywide. And so that shows you that those projects, you know, water, transportation, while we have those dollars in reserves and in our bank, you know, and some people say, oh my gosh, you have all this money in the bank. Well, those are dollars that we've collected, impact fees we've collected to build these projects that we are, that we will start, ever start to build. And so a lot of times you don't finish the project, you get the impact fee, you know, permanent time, but you might not start the project for six months or a year. And so that's why you see the reserves number, we're using the reserves because those dollars can only be used for that purpose, and that's why you have a big number on the reserve side. Your non-operating revenues are $35 million. Those are your user fees. So that is your like water fee, sewer fee, garbage fee. That's a big portion of the revenue. But those are also enterprise funds, and their revenues run those enterprise funds without any tax dollars. So governmental funds, you can see here, total governmental funds are $90 million. And you can see proprietary funds, which are your enterprise funds, they are $55 million. So your proprietary funds are going to be your water, wastewater, reclaimed water, and sanitation. Those are going to be your proprietary fund. But in total, at the end of the day, this is where you can see, all funds balance at $146 million. Yeah, $146 million. But in total, at the end of the day, this is where you can see, all funds balance at one hundred and forty-six million, uh, yeah, one hundred and forty-six million dollars. So on the expense side, you can see here fifty-three million, of a hundred and forty-six goes to personnel. Thirty-three million goes to operating, forty-three million goes to capital outlay. Five point six million is debt service, that's debt service citywide. Transfers of nine million dollars, so you have nine million dollars transferring between funds. And then you have a small other expense of eight thousand, this is also a transfer, if you recall, in the stormwater fund. The stormwater fund performed, um, helped with, um, one of your special assessments. Where they had a drainage that we had to help, and so this is their payment where they pay us back, um, each year over time in their assessment. So here's a graph that shows you, so you can see thirty-six percent of the whole city budget goes to personnel, twenty-three percent goes to operating, thirty percent goes to capital outlay. And debt service is almost four percent, so you can see kind of how where the money goes based on the expense side. Um, so here is broken out by function, so you can see exactly how a hundred and forty-six million dollars goes out. You can see public work gets fifty-six million dollars. Public safety gets forty-three million dollars. Keep in mind, public works, when we say public works, it's sanitation, utilities, it's everything. It's all transportation, it's all, um, transportation is a separate one, I'm sorry, fifteen million. But the fifty-six million represents all the public works. Public safety is almost forty-four million dollars, if you recall, last year it was thirty-seven. So they have seven million dollars more than they had, public safety had the year before. Transportation has fifteen million, you have a room of less and a couple million more. General government represents everything else, that is all of your, um, um, finance, HR, that's all the other departments, department split together. Parks and recreation, eight million dollars, you see transfers, you see, um, community development. Um, I need to go back because I misspoke, I want to make sure I get this right. Public services is your general government portion of services that, that public works provides. Those are street, um, stormwater, those will be those funds. The public works on the top at fifty-six million is water, reclaim water, sanitation. That's your, your, your utility and your to- utility side, they have to be separate because they're different funds. Community development is two point eight million, special assessments are a hundred and seventy-one, those are all your special assessments. The streetlight fund, as you know, we started a streetlight fund, where all new development coming in pays a streetlight assessment. Um, they're up to two hundred and three thousand dollars. So you can see that, that would be two hundred and three thousand if we didn't have a special assessment, that we would have, you know, our streets improvement fund, that we wouldn't be able to do, be able to do even less than what we're doing now. So you can see that number continues to climb as we build. And this is the fund that you, as you're aware of, that we're doing a study for now, to come up with a streetlight assessment, so that we can free up our gas tax money and our, and our streets money to do streets. So by department, we can see public safety is thirty percent of the overall budget. Public works is almost thirty-nine percent. Um, you can see general government's thirteen, transportation's fifteen or ten percent, um, so on and so forth. It does show airport at zero, that, we're done with that, we sold the airport, we've closed the airport out, so there's no expenses, there's nothing being, um, going to into airport. So at the end of the day, the whole overall city budget is balanced at one hundred and forty-six million dollars. So that's your total picture. It's a little tough, that's high level, I told you. I want to go now into, dive into the actual fund, so you can see what's in each fund. And of course, as you know, the general fund is the main operating fund of the city. Um, it's the one where your property tax is included. So I want to go through the general fund now the same way. So some of the highs in the general fund, six percent merit pay. If you remember, we talked about longevity pay, of doubling our longevity pay due to inflation, due to issues that we're facing that we see coming. We wanted to be able to find a place where we could help all of our employees. This will affect all of our employees based on their longevity, so it will double their longevity pay, which they usually receive before Thanksgiving. So this will be an added longevity pay, not bonus, but an, a, a longevity payment that they will see, receive as double, um, to be able to kind of put some more money in, into the employee's pocket.
Is that for only full-time employees or?
Yes, that's based, that's only full-time employees, that, that policy is based on full-time employees. So, um, as you know, also including the budget, the police department, their pay adjustments, compared to pay adjustments. Um, they are included in here, um, which is very important. As you know, I know I've already talked with Chief some, he's already had this adjustment, they know it, people know it's coming, it's been good for us. I think it helps, you know, I think he's hired two or three more. And I think with them knowing that this is coming, it's going to be able to help us to be able to hire, um, police officers. Health insurance, we talked about that, ten percent, um, there's ninety-one percent increase in training dollars in this budget, so the training dollars have gone up a big, a significant portion. And as you know, a big piece of that is in the fire department for paramedic training. So there's funding for, for, um, to be able to, um, help those paramedics go to school, help pay for paramedic school. Your discretionary account, if you recall, I told you that we increased it to ten thousand, it was three. So we've added seven thousand to each one of your discretionary accounts. Um, as you know, pretty much we don't, those are controlled by you. We don't usually tell you how you can spend those, but we felt this was an appropriate time to give you some more funding because of some of the nonprofits and things that, that you're experiencing and trying to help and work with. This allows you to be able to kind of help or, or work with the ones that you feel you want to work with. Um, annual debt reduction, we've reduced the budget by one point two million of debt payment, which frees up another one point two that we, that's in this budget that we're using. Along those lines, it's also good to talk about, right here, I'd like to talk about freeing these debt payments up, will set us up for the public safety complex, will be ready, when we issue that, that, we'll be ready to take on a debt payment for, um, that building by freeing up these debts. Um, the eighteen new positions in this fund, um, I'm not going to go through all of them since I went through all of my first one, but there are six new firefighters, your division chief, your trained division chief is in here. Um, your GIS information technology position and so on and so forth, you can see, we went through those.
Does the vision chief are getting a training and a safety?
Yeah, well, here's what you're getting, so you're getting a training position. And I know Will is going to come up and do a presentation for you on fire, we're going to let him focus, let him give you fire. And he'll be able to tell you in their org chart, the chief is actually going to have two, the way he's done his org chart, he's going to have a separate position for each one. He's going to have a training position, which is this one, and he has another position that he has, it's going to be a safety position. So there's going to be one, a person for each one, and, and Will can show you that and explain that to you from the fire side. Um, I think, and you know, I'll, I'm, I'm going to let Will, I'll let Will do that, I'll do it for Will. So, um, you have, um, twenty vehicles, a fire engine, we talked about these before. The ADA playground, there's funding in here for the ADA playground. We're trying to get a grant match so that we can do more, um, so we're going to use this to help with our match. As Commissioner, um, the last question said, we had a meeting, there were people who wanted to come that, that weren't able to come. So we're going to do another one, since we have that much interest, which is a good thing, to get more out to see, to still have another meeting. We had to have that one in order to qualify for a grant, but we can have another one to get, since we have more interest, which is a great thing, we'll have, we can have another one. The current millage rate is set four point one eight seven six, um, as you can see, I went over these already, a nine hundred and seventeen million dollar increase in taxable value. That's where the big chunk of revenue is coming from, three point six million is coming from there. Eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars or eight percent increase in sales tax revenues. That's where we sit today, but be careful, that's what we want to keep an eye on, that's what we watch each month, to see what that number is. Um, you can see the current year we're sitting in is doing pretty good, but we'll continue to monitor that and make sure, um, that we stay close to that number. Um, communication services tax is up almost three hundred thousand. The new fire inspection program, as you know, you approved new fire inspection fees. They're going to generate about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Um, Medicaid, ma- ambulance fees for Medicaid, the payment that you approved to, today in your budget, um, amendment with Vladimir at the, at the first meeting, will generate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you'll get from.
So these revenue highlights are, are the new fees that were?
Yes, yes, I'm getting, yes. The hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for the planning and zoning fees, you just approved your first reading of that. Those fees, that's a, that's how much additional it will generate, a hundred and forty-five thousand we're estimating, based on those fees. Business tax, at the next meeting coming up, we're going to bring you, we have an agreement, it, where we have this company who worked with Longwood and they've worked with Alsmar. Where they go out and make sure we have all of our business tax people, make sure we're not, that we've got everybody that has to pay a business tax, to make sure we have them all. So they're going to do that for us and all for us to make sure that we have everybody included and that everybody's paying their portion of their business tax. And then, of course, we use, that will generate about a hundred and five thousand dollars of, um, revenue, um, for those businesses. And then, um, we're using one point four in reserves as well to balance, um, this budget.
Sort of question about that, the, we just approved, uh, for twenty-five percent of reserves.
Right.
Which we're not funding.
Right.
We're not funding reserves, right?
No, because you have twenty-five, so we don't need to, we don't need to fund.
Oh, I thought they just said we had twenty percent.
Yeah.
Further up on the, maybe not on this slide or on this section, but on one of the, say that again?
That's total reserve, Mrs. Jennings.
Oh, yeah, 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 we're using twenty percent of reserve from all the funds.
Got you, understood.
Yeah, so of that, that, that twenty percent you saw citywide, one point four of that number is this number. The majority of those reserves come from enterprise funds. So you can see here, the general fund is balanced at sixty-four million, a little more than sixty-four million dollars. The prior year it was fifty-eight million, so you can see, you know, it's almost six million dollars more than it was the year before, and again, three point six of that comes from property tax. So where, where do, where do the monies go in the general fund? This is an important slide. Public safety is almost sixty-two percent. In prior years, we've been around sixty, fifty-nine, sixty. So you can see a percentage of dollars overall budget and general fund, more of it is going to public safety, at sixty-two percent. Public services is getting five percent. That's your facilities, your, um, um, fleet, um, those services that provide by public services to general fund. Parks and recreation is seven point five million. There's one point nine in transfers. General government's nine point two, and community development's two point eight or four percent of the overall budget. So expenses, sixty-six, almost sixty-seven percent of the sixty-three million goes to personnel services or to our employees. Operating expenses are fifteen million, capital outlay is four million or six and a half percent. Debt service is only one point four percent, this is a very important number, I want to point out again, if you recall and go back just about three or four years ago, that number was three or four million. It's now only nine hundred and fifty, twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And we lose some more next year. So like I said, you have set yourself up perfectly for a fifty-five, fifty-three million dollar building to be able to finance that building because you don't have a debt payment. Now you'll have a big debt payment when that comes on, but you're setting yourself up for that.
What's that payment look like?
We've heard it could be anywhere from two and a half to three and a half million dollars a year. So it's going to push back where we were, but because we have done this, we're able to take on that payment and not have to, um, you know, hopefully not have to use other dollars that we can keep free up for other services, so. Um, so, I'm not going to go through these one of these, I went through these on the first one, but I told you roughly where we were on those, so I just want, but I want you to see, it's online, the public can see it, they can drill down. If anyone go all the way down to the lines, they can go all the way down to each line. But I want you to see that the budget is balanced. Um, at the bottom, I want you to see that revenues and expenses are zero. So it's important that we have a balanced budget, we're required to have a balanced budget at the millage rate that we have, so I want you to be able to see that. So that's the general fund side. Um, I don't know, Mayor, do you want me to stop here and not fire, since we're in general, done with your piece, and I'll come back and do those few?
Because I think that's really the only fund, there was some, some questions about.
I think that's the biggest one, we've had the significant changes, everything else has been pretty much.
Yeah. And, uh, come on up, Will, and just give us a brief kind of overview of kind of where, where we're at and what the new budget looks like, please, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Um, I apologize first of not having an actual presentation, formal one, I'm just pretty much updating you. Chief Wyllum was unable to attend as far as the meeting today. He had a prior commitment, and however, he's briefed me, he's updated me on the current events. I'll do my best to try to answer everything for you. I'd like to start off addressing Mr. Duran, Gail, Sierra, thank you for your support. In the prior meeting, for those that didn't get to watch, they're truly supportive of the fire department. With everything that's happened, they've been there by our side day by day, the same way we've been trying to be by their side. They've helped every single member in this department, thank you.
Commissioners, that brings up part of, uh, your last discussion you guys had in, uh, your budget workshop about the accident. And I'd like to update everybody as far as where we're at, it's been sixty-nine days since the accident, fifty-four days and Austin passed away. The men and women at Apocryphaire Department are still mourning. On their behalf, I want to thank you all for your support as well. We've seen it, we hear it. The men and women understand that you want to support us in a safety manner moving forward, so we're very thankful of that. Currently, right now, what we've started as far as within the department internally is a Austin Duran Safety Initiative. And this means a lot to us, putting his name on something, we can't fail at it. That was a complete restructuring of our safety committee, added new members onto it, represented each individual level on there. Since that day, we've had four meetings, um, we have another meeting set up for next week. We've been meeting more frequently than we've ever done. Our purpose behind this is during these meetings, we're trying to do a safety assessment, and we're trying to look at practices within our department that have some flaws, we're reviewing some policies, we're kind of taking a step back. But I want to emphasize, in order to proceed any further than what we have, we need a dedicated health and safety officer. We need somebody with direct oversight, somebody that's going to be able to guide our safety committee moving forward in every aspect of it, to assist with a specific training officer in the development of all of our policies. Another portion of this is a trailer committee, our trailer committee has been meeting, we've had a couple of meetings together already, and not only are they trying to put together a department policy on trailers, we're trying to identify which trailer should we use? Are we using the right appropriate trailers? Obviously, we weren't with the accident that just happened, and we've just taken a step back completely, and we stopped all trailer operations throughout the entire department until, one, we find out what's safe, two, that we can get complete training to all the men and women. And this is my second focus point of not only having a dedicated training officer for this, with a dedicated health and safety officer, together, they could roll this out to the entire department. This is something that we need, just being honest with everybody here.
And, uh, Chief Sanji, the one thing on that, on the trailer safety, I definitely want to make sure that our public works and our parks and rec get that same training, because obviously both those departments probably use trailers much more often than the fire department. So when you get some training put together, I'd like to make sure that we coordinate the other two departments that, that, and even, I guess, the police have a couple of trailers that would be, so I think everybody, just like we did the chainsaw training a couple of weeks ago, want to make sure that all the people that are engaged in those, those activities, that, that there might be some safety issues that we're getting everybody involved.
Sir. Fire administration, we started reviewing some policies, we've had to take a step back. Fire Administration, we started reviewing some policies, we've had to take a step back. We love to provide the same level of quality to all the citizens in every response area we do have, but we honestly have to take a step back. There are some individuals that have on boarded into our department that have not received the appropriate training to be doing some of these functions. And that's why I emphasize again, my biggest thing up here today is to please drive that home that we do need a dedicated training officer. We need a health and safety officer. With that, we can now move forward as far as implementing our current practices, new practices, everything as far as a. Going back to the basics of the Fire Department, making sure that everybody's appropriately trained on it. The Austin Duran, as far as investigation with the state Fire Marshals, we should, we've heard that we should be receiving something very soon. They've concluded their investigation, it's just a moment of them releasing that to us. Once that's aired, made public, as far as, I know Chief is going to be updating everybody, getting into the family, and moving that forward to everybody, uh the entire council. NIOSH, which is the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health, they only take on forty percent of all accidents nationwide, fatalities. They reached out to us through the State Fire Marshal's Office, Chief has reached out to them. And they're taking as far as Austin's incident, and they're going to do a thorough investigation of it. They want to provide the education nationwide to other departments. If there is an issue and something that could have been preventable, they want to identify it and give it to every firefighter out there. So that way, if we can save another life, let's do so with this investigation. And that's going to take, they estimated approximately about eighteen to twenty-four months. So they just had communication last week and they told us, we're going to start moving in that direction towards you, start gathering some of the information. And that being said, I just want to be as transparent as possible, I know there's some rumors about the destruction of the trailer. The trailer's never been destroyed. The moment the accident happened after that initial investigation, it got moved and secured. It was taken out of service and moved down to facilities or Fleet Services out there. That way, NIOSH, anybody moving forward that wants to do an investigation on it, we have it there secured. It's not at our fire station, it's been there since day one after that investigation. Last week on Wednesday, the State Fire Marshal's Office sent out a field representative. They came out and they did a documentation and compliance inspection of the Fire Department. This is something that we've had done maybe once in the last ten years. When they send out a field investigators typically due to a fatality or a serious injury, which we recently had. What they did is they came in for the entire day and they reviewed all the policies. They wanted to see our hazmat emergency operations plan, they wanted to see near miss documentation, how do we document an accident of a firefighter? Records and documentation, training, um our safety committee notes as far as accident injuries, toxic substance within the Fire Department. This is something that was concluded on Wednesday, I still do not have an update for you on this, this is another moment that we're waiting for from the State Fire Marshal's Office. And the last piece of this, on top of the state, on top of NIOSH, now there's a third-party consultant. Chief has been meeting with multiple agents, or specialized uh services there. That they offer a direct Fire Department investigation, third-party independent to review everything from health, safety. To our training records, how we operate, um just to meet the procurement rules, he had to get the quotes and get everything together, I know he's completed that. And that's something that's going to be moving forward with a third-party consultant.
We're, it's going to be signed tomorrow, so we'll have that agreement in, in the end tomorrow.
What agreement is that?
What's that?
You just said.
For a company to come in and do an assessment of.
A third-party consultant, completely independent of the State Fire Marshal's Office, completely independent of us, somebody that knows the fire service. I know one of the individuals he had talked to was a group that actually wrote the Health and Safety Committee book, as far as health and safety for the fire service. So these are individuals that, that's all they specialize in, they come back and they see where did a breakdown happen? And identify it and move forward with new policies and addressing those. So that's something that he's been taking care of and trying to get three different independent ones as far as the quotes.
Okay, so my, my question to you is, I'm, I'm happy that you are moving forward in this direction. Because safety is definitely what we all want for each firefighter. But what are we doing right now till we get there? Are, are you changing procedures now?
Yes.
Are you changing?
And that's, okay.
You know, are, are you taking those extra steps without anyone telling you you need to do them?
Yes, and that's one thing that I had mentioned, and I'll clear it up a little bit more, we stopped all trailer operations.
Okay.
We had more than just that sand trailer, had a hazmat trailer, we have a foam trailer, an air trailer, all those trailers. There's nobody moving the trailer in the city from the Fire Department, that was immediately stopped.
Okay, so if you respond to a call and at one point you used a trailer to get to that call, whether it was an accident or something. How are you now answering those calls? How are you responding to them?
So we will not bring that trailer, since nobody's trained on it, what we're doing is moving forward with our mutual aid agreements as far as count, calling. Something that we've never done in our history, until we can get everything back to regular, get our training, everybody's a hundred percent knowing what they're doing. We will use mutual aid, if we have to call the county for that help, we will do so.
Okay.
And this moves us forward as far as to the two positions. You heard me earlier say, we need these two positions, speaking with Chief. This is something that he's gonna, there's a two-step process behind it from what he explained to me. The first part is a organizational restructuring of administration. Reviewing the roles and the responsibility of each individual person in administration. That will create an opportunity for another person as far as to come in, to be dedicated solely to training, and a person dedicated solely to health and safety. Seeking the qualifications, I know he said he's identified two individuals, they meet the state requirement, they're qualified to fill these roles. He wants to add these two positions immediately, and that's obviously with your blessing and making sure that we could go ahead and do so. He wants to address it formally as soon as he gets back, which should be within the next couple of hours, he'll be back in town. Um, moving forward, he did say as far as Fire Administration would be composed of suppression, which we already had. Training, which would be a new addition. A dedicated health and life safety, which would be a new addition, fire inspections, EMS, and also our quality assurance officer. We'd like to move forward with that, open that up to eligible qualified candidates for that. And that could be done as soon as it's already in the budget, so we're going to move forward with that with HR. Last week, we concluded the final step of our new hires and testing. They came in, did a complete EMS assessment, we did our interviews, and we onboarded eight individuals. Of those eight, two of them are paramedics, one is actually still in school. Three of them have prior fire service experience, one came from Saint Lucy County with seventeen years, the other one came from Orange County with three years. And one from Osceola County, just over a year of time on. That filled all the vacancies. In reviewing as far as what Chief presented to you on the last session, he came forward with a three-step process. And I, I think it just needs to be articulated a little bit better of. His goal is to put three individuals on every fire apparatus. He has it broken down into three different years, three different budget years, the first year starting with this one with six. The next bu- budget year would be twelve, and then the third budget year, he's asking for an additional six. I've not had the opportunity to talk to him about this number, because I think it would be actually nine on the last budget year. So that we could fill all seven of our fire apparatuses with somebody on there, with three individuals on that fire apparatus.
So will that occur this year?
It would occur in two engines. In this new budget year, the way that the proposal that he moved forward with was to ask for six. So that he could put a backwards firefighter on engine two and engine three. With the commitment of a three-year program where we'd be adding on twelve next year and six or nine the following year. So that every apparatus has somebody on there. And that's a, it's a hard, it's a hard direction, I understand his mindset of the infrastructure. We have an issue with infrastructure, our fire stations were only designed for four. I think some of you have taken visits to our fire stations, we have to do some type of retrofitting, remodeling to it. Only one fire station is set up with coed living. Some of our showers, the piping, Station One, you guys are all aware of it as far as that's, and thank you for moving forward of a public safety building. But it's to the point where it's coming right back up the drains, ACs are going out, leaks are happening at the fire stations. This is where, if we want to move in this direction, and we will do anything that you want, we need to also make that a priority. With adding the people, we have to retrofit some of these fire stations, we have to fix the infrastructure. If you said tomorrow, let's add an additional firefighter, we don't have any space for them. Station five, which is our newest station, was at capacity on day one. At one point, we had eight firefighters at Station, at Station Five. The only way we accomplished that was using our computer room and putting a bunk bed in there. If we want to move forward, we got to move forward in the right direction. And I think Chief's plan of the three years is up to you, if you want to continue on that path to three years, if you want it faster, that's fine. But we have to also include the infrastructure behind it. We have to be able to put it up to date where we could bring in an additional person in their sleeping quarters for them, from bedding. To, I know it sounds very simple, but just a chair at the table, all of our tables are designed for four people. I mean, we're at that point where, okay, we want to expand and we want to grow, we want to add people to it, we have to include that infrastructure into it as well. So if you didn't like the three-year commitment and you want to do a one-year commitment, that's up to you how you want us to move forward. The national level as far as for firefighters is four, the minimum standard for that, and that's something that we should be setting as our goal.
Okay.
Any questions on his three-year plan?
Um. I, I mean, we're moving forward in the direction of safety. And I really do understand what you're saying about, we just don't have the infrastructure within the firehouses. In order to accommodate the extra bodies, is that what you're saying? And obviously, um when Mr. Duran read the letter from his son, I mean, when he got hired. He also felt like he didn't have a space that was his own. Um, he was living out of his, the trunk of his car, and um so how do we?
We could do it.
Yeah, but how do, how do? You're doing all the right things as far as procedures and having the training officer and the safety officer. But that's your specialty, so guide us.
Sure.
Tell us how can we help you to get that goal in your firehouse? Because I, I don't know, that's not my expertise, but I feel that all the other things that we need. In order to have the safety, in order to do this, what the goal we're trying to reach. Tell us what you need in order to retrofit your firehouse.
So right now, we would need eighteen firefighters to move forward with three people on the engine. That takes care of the manpower part, and that's also within our limits of people being offered PTO, vacation days. It is minimum staffing, but means that it affords a third person on each individual apparatus. And then we'd also need funds as far as retrofitting some of these stations immediately as far as that we could bring in beds. I know that might not have been in the budget, which needs to be, needs to be included, and it all depends on how fast you want us to get there. We could do this all this budget year, just, we need your direction on that, how much you're willing to afford us to move forward and.
So when, during the budget time, that was never brought up to us, that, you know, those extra needs. And obviously, I didn't think about them, um because we were just thinking of personnel, you know, um training. We didn't think about the, you know, the physical, uh, you know, beds and space. So I, I just don't know, um how do we move forward with that? So I, I'm asking the, you know, uh, our chief administrator of office. What, how do we kind of move forward with that? Because we're not talking about, we, we seem to be kind of satisfying the personnel, we, uh, we, we're dealing with the procedures. But we never talked about the actual infrastructure.
Well, I think Commissioner, if, if we're going to talk infrastructure, we're going to have to get an architect, we're going to have to get information numbers on what it would take to expand these stations. It's going to take time, that would take a lot of time. And then you have to put, you have a cost to that, you know, do you build a whole new stations or do you retrofit the ones you have, if you want to make stations bigger? That's a massive project in itself. So um, you know, if that's a direction that we're going to go, and we need to, we need to start studying that now. And looking at those buildings and finding out what is that going to cost us to do. You know, you didn't get three, four, two, three, and four, were not built for um this kind of staff. And so we have to have a place to put them. Um, um, if you, if we do hire more staff, you have to have a place to put them. So I think that this is like, like Chief was saying, I think you have to have a plan, you have to have a vision, you have to have a plan of. How are you going to, where are you going to put them? When do you hire them? Um, you know, what years do you hire them? So I think you have to have a plan to make sure that you have everything in place. It, it doesn't make sense to bring in all these people and stack them on top of each other in a fire station. Um, that's a hazard in itself, that's not safe.
No.
So we have to come up with a plan on figuring out if we're all going to add two personnel to the stations, how do we? Um, you know, how do we retrofit those stations? You know, and maybe there is a way to do it where we don't have to build massive, or onto the stations to make, maybe there's something we can do internally. I, I don't know, it would take somebody, an architect or somebody to give us that information to make sure we have all of the living quarters and a number of occupancy right in the station. So um, so I think that's something, that's something we have to start studying, we need to start reviewing that and studying that now.
We do.
If that's the direction we're going.
You're telling me that at Station Five is already, that, how many can you put in Station Five?
We could retrofit as far as a computer room and add an additional bedroom there, which we did before.
Station Five?
We had at one time up to eight there.
And how many do you have now?
Seven right now.
And they are comfortable?
Yes, no, it's a beautiful station as far as the inside, as far as the many, it's awesome what you guys provided us there, it's beautiful, and I wish all the other stations were that way.
And the new station house that we're getting, six, will it also accommodate seven or eight?
Correct, it's set up, from my understanding, was the same identical plan, meaning that the plan that we used at Five was the same one that was going to be utilized at Station Six. Now, I say that to bring it to your attention, I'm not saying this to complain up here, because I, our biggest point is, we need the three people. We need the safety aspect of it.
Right.
But at the same time, I don't want to come up here and tell you, hey, just give us the manpower and not give us anything else. I'm also coming forward, asking you for additional funds for that. And we'd like to move forward as fast as possible with it, our goal internally should be as a city to adapt to having four firefighters on every apparatus. I know we can't do that immediately, can't do that tomorrow, but the first step was to get us to three. And three years might be too long, one year might be better for you, but that's something where I want to throw this out there before it's too late. As a hope that we could actually come up with a plan as far as allocating some funds for that.
Okay. Mr. Bixson?
Give us numbers, give us, you know, again, this, some of this we're just hearing as far as the needs for facilities to even bring these things on, so. You know, give us clarity, give us numbers, what are we looking at?
We know for a fact for manpower, we need eighteen additional firefighters, that would get us to the three.
Can we add on to the station, do we have to build another station, can we put a bunkhouse, I mean, what?
Yes, sir.
And what does that, is that two million, ten million, you know? I mean, there's just no frame of reference to, to go by there, because again, that's, that's, this is a very valid reason to utilize reserves.
Sure.
This is a, this is the whole point of that, so that's what we need to do. And again, you know, like she's saying, we, we depend on you to tell us, because we don't know that part.
Yes, sir.
And we do care about you and, and care about the force, and you're, couldn't be prouder in this city, both our police and fire. But again, that helps us to then understand, okay, this is what it's going to take to do this. And I do have one question as well, um, Mr. Duran, and again, thank you, thank you. Um, he had mentioned about a mentor program, is that something that these two physicians that we're hiring, that the safety will be able to help institute?
So Chief, last week.
That's their main focus, will they be able to develop within our own forces a mentor program, what does that mean?
They put together a safe, or separate from the safety committee, it was a mentorship committee. And this was individuals from newly hired to seasoned individuals who've been here almost twenty years. And it was great to see as far as the outcome, I only got the update of the actual meeting itself, I didn't participate in it, but it. But it shed a lot of light. Everything Houston wrote in that email, I remember being twenty years old here too, feeling that same way. And it's a, another identifiable area where we failed at that. I failed at that. I felt those same feelings. Every firefighter has probably gone through that same feeling of, do I say something, do I not? And that's why that mentorship committee is so big, but it needs a direct oversight of it. And it needs to have as far as a health and safety officer being part of that, that training officer being part of that. Somebody that's in charge of training that they could go to where they don't feel, hey, I'm going to bother this person, or do I say something to them? No, that's their sole job is to train these individuals, make sure that they feel comfortable, make sure that they're confident in what they're doing before we release them onto calls. So I think that's going to be a huge factor to it, adding those two positions.
So you, you recently, and I, you recently promoted four different firefighters within.
Yes.
I have their names and congratulations to Sean Knapp, Cody Bennett, Nicholas Elrod, and Dwight Ashton. So they're now moving up in rank. Is there a specific training for them? Because now they're going to be the leaders that are going to train those behind them.
So there was a plan in place, but I think at this point, once you add that new position to it, all plans in place needed, in a sense, stop. Let's reevaluate it and put something together that's worthwhile. Not something where somebody has to meet the quota, there's no direct oversight, who signs that person off? Let's get somebody that's dedicated to that. And I think that, everything needs to be reviewed completely. Give these people full rein on being able to fix these deficiencies, identify them and move forward with them.
So how are you moving forward with establishing these two priority positions that we are saying that we need, the safety and the training?
Chief has already identified who they are. He wants to personally move forward as far as addressing it with them. He's, from my understanding, had conversations with them, but to formalize as far as their promotion into these two positions. And that's something that he would do when he gets back.
You said a promotion of these positions?
Yes, or reclassification as far as, it would honestly be a promotion because it is a different rank. It would be moving up to division chief is what he had asked for. I know there is a correction as far as on the slide, it said district chief on there. But district chief would be separate, there would be a line individual only twenty-four hours. The division chief would be there Monday to Friday to see all the shifts through and be able to train with them and the health safety as well.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I guess I have a couple of questions. We're talking about the safety, the training officer and the, the safety officer and the training officer. Do we have a deadline as to when these positions will be filled?
So he has it down from the update he gave me of October first, that they would be in position on October first.
On October first?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Then my next question is, we're hearing about the facilities needs in order for these additional firefighters. We know that our city is growing at a rapid pace. I would hate to see us retrofit the fire stations so that we can have three firefighters on a, on the engine when three years from now we may need four. So why not, if we're going to retrofit, let's do it for the four, plan it for the future so we don't have to come back and rehash this all over again.
I agree, that's what I was saying, set the goal for four. That's the minimum national standard. Set it now for four, work on three, get us to that level, but outfit your stations for four.
Yes, if we're going to, we're going to retrofit, I, I think we need to do it with, with four in mind so that as we grow, that the ability to grow is, is in place. And so that's, that's the way, that's the way I look at it. And I think that's what we need to, to look forward to doing. If, if this is what we're going to do, then we need to plan accordingly and invest taxpayers' dollars wisely rather than investing now for three and then three years later we come back, now we need room for four. So let, let's just do the whole thing.
Mr. Nesta?
So, your presentation is a severe disconnect from your counterpart two weeks ago. I heard a lot of needs tonight, refreshing to hear. Took a lot of notes, I had a lot of questions or at least comments overall. The, you guys did a safety assessment through the new safety committee or?
No, we were just reviewing current policies that stood out to everybody. That was one of the key things that we looked at was what's existing. With risk management from the city, that's that quarterly meeting that he was telling you about where they come over quarterly. We've expanded upon that now. It's not only just quarterly, it's any time that anybody identifies anything via, we have a job form system, they send in, see something, say something, they put a job form together. We review it as a committee and what can we identify, what can we stop? I mean, we've, from snakes, how to actually remove a snake, this is training that we got ten, fifteen years ago. We're going back to it, we're going to partner up with a critical control to establish a formal training once we get this training person in place on October first. That's one of the routes that we're moving in and training with them. On top of the new hires, new hires are set to start on October tenth.
Okay, then through this, I guess the safety committee, were there, you said we've taken out trailers completely?
Yes, sir.
What other services have we removed?
Currently, right now, the trailers were notified as far as that nobody's to move any trailers at this time. We had what were called rescue packs. Rescue packs where a small self-contained breathing apparatus, kind of like a scuba tank, but instead of being on your back, it's actually right there on your chest. And that would be in place for somebody that was, A, being a safety for somebody that's a vehicle into the water. And one of our members, we always, we've moved recent, or not recently, a couple of years ago, to top water rescue only. We do not do any submersion. If a vehicle submerged underwater, we're calling the county. If it was not witnessed, if it was longer than thirty minutes, it's deemed a recovery. And at that point, it's the sheriff's office, they come in with their sonar, they've assisted us in the past with that. We do not put anybody in that safety situation there. Those tanks had not been hydroged in years. So this is something that has to be recertified every five years. Those are being shipped off to the manufacturer to get rehydroged on that, plus the training. We should not be putting anybody else on a dive pack that has been trained on it. And that was one of the services that we did reduce there. I told you about the trailer operations and another key one was the SHOT team. Special Hazards Operation Team is something that our members, once they reach a level of independent courses that they're taking, they apply to that group, they test for that group, and they're the two individuals that are assigned to the squads. Because our tower position has already been tested for, they're formerly a lieutenant and they're an engineer there. These are for the squad vehicles. One of the concerns were the experience of some of the members of the SHOT team. How long have they been on? We have a ex firefighter that's been here nineteen years and we have a firefighter that's been here two years. The one that has nineteen years has several years of experience pulling a trailer, hauling stuff, life experience behind it. Did they meet the qualification for the SHOT team? Yes. Were they put on the SHOT team because they're qualified for it through the parameters? Absolutely. So what was taken away was the title of the SHOT team. We still have the same members, same certification, just the districts were advised, which is the on-duty commander of the day, put the most qualified person that you have in that position, a firefighter on that squad. It doesn't have to just be the ones that were labeled for the SHOT. If we have somebody that might be better qualified for them, for that position, go ahead and put them on the squads that day. This will come back into place with proper training, with a dedicated person overseeing all the training and increase some of the requirements as far as for the SHOT team. What does it take to get, to keep you on the SHOT team? Do you have to have X amount of years of experience? That's something that could be added to it, but all this just needs to be reanalyzed.
Okay, let me see here. So, and just, because I want to make sure there's no ambiguity here. We're, we're, we're hiring a separate, or I guess promoting a separate training officer and promoting a separate health and safety.
Yes, sir.
So what's happened to their positions that they're leaving then?
One is a new position, so we would have to hire from the bottom. It happens as a firefighter as far as trickle effect, as far as for the promotions to get that person where they were at. The other individual from the reclassification, my understanding is that the administrative positions are reclassifying to allow one person to be able just to do that, where it would not cost the city, am I correct on that, an individual position?
Okay, all right. And then quality assurance, wasn't that a, something along those lines? Don't we have that position still open?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a deadline for that being filled?
It's immediate as far as, this is something that should have been done a long time ago for me. I, I certainly, I certainly benefit the most from it. In EMS division, just one person's unheard of. Having a QA, not only does that identify trends, we could identify issues that we have going on, and now with a team of a health safety officer, we could, and a training officer, we could put in place real formal training based off of our everyday calls that we're seeing. So QA officer is somebody that we want to move forward with and somebody that's qualified for it, somebody that's done this job, that has the experience of it. Through the last year, I've been talking to different individuals, letting them know, hey, this position might be coming up. As soon as it comes up, I'll let you know. From other agencies, to other healthcare facilities, as far as, hey, we really want somebody that is determined to turn the system around, somebody that is, that's their sole focus point on is empowering our members and identifying what issues that they might be encountering.
Okay, so my concern is that we're, we're funding a lot of these positions and we're not getting filled. So I, I know October first is a deadline that, that we're putting, or that has been put on training and health and safety, but there needs to be something put on the QA person as well. We need to be actively motivated for that and.
I believe, you know, I'm going to be calling on you, as far as with our HR here, we could put that out tomorrow.
So that's not, the QA is not out right now?
No, sir. That's what the holdup has been. It wasn't out and then Chief identified the individual that was going through a situation and wanted to offer it to them, that was later on. And that individual has now returned back to shift, so that position is available and.
Well, that needs to be, I, I think just logically readily available and open. I, I can't believe that that's.
So the individual that he thought wanted the position now that he's back, he doesn't want the position?
No, it wasn't that he wanted the position, Chief was trying to put it out there. He was going through a terrible situation at home.
Correct.
And he wanted, to the point that he was even confused of what direction he was going to go. Do I even go back to work? Do I give my full focus to my family? And that was something that he offered too. And when he went through this, it was unknown to me afterwards, it was like, wow, that's really awesome as far as that. Because that other individual, we all care for.
Yeah, I, I understood that. And I said, but now that he's back?
Now we can move forward as far as he does not, he's made it work so far with his family. He just recently came back to shift. I want to say as early as last week, if I'm not confused, maybe at the most a week and a half he's been back. So this is a recent thing that he moved forward with of coming back on shift and that position is available. So we could fill that as soon as I could get something to HR and have that out tomorrow for the public.
Yeah, I, I think that, that's something that absolutely needs to happen.
Yes, sir.
Immediately. In reference to the staffing itself, the six twelve six, you said we need eighteen total firefighters that, with that though, we have huge capex for retrofitting our current fire stations. Having gone to many of them last week, either they're too small or there's so much more work that needs to be done, they need to be knocked down and just start over. I don't want to, to Commissioner Smith's point, I want a plan for the future, obviously, but I also don't want to wait for this, we can't wait for three, five, four, we can't wait for another year, we really can't. That's not an option. We need to be filling these, our need now. And we'll figure out how to, where they, things leave at my house. I'll figure it out, we, we can figure this out, we need to hire them though. So, and, and we'll work on making sure they're comfortable and, and, and safe in their own, at each station and get to that point where they do have their own separate rooms, similar to station five. What an incredible station. Your, your guys' gym there is incredible, I was jealous of that. So I, I, I think we really should just, I, I don't understand why we can't get to the eighteen firefighters now. Open those positions up, do what we need to do, and then start getting the quotes and all that for each station to be retrofitted correctly. I don't see why we can't do that, I think that's an easy, easy fix to do, I mean.
Every man and woman out there would appreciate that, it's an additional barrier of safety. Getting to a call with two people, I know we have other trucks arriving, but there's a chance that might not happen. So if we could get there with three right now and obviously set our goal in the future for four, that's the direction we need to go in.
Well, let's, I, I, I mean, that would be what I would want to do moving forward. Let's figure out how to get the eighteen now and we'll start on those quotes to start retrofitting or, or adding on or whatever we need to do to each station to make it work. It, this isn't impossible, we can figure this out, so let's do it. That's all I have.
You have a question I have.
Yes, ma'am.
Obviously, with the passing of, of Boston. We had, I remember the young youth that came on with him. I actually have his photograph when they were all sworn in. It was a lot of trauma for them. What are we doing to help those surviving young firefighters that were with him on that day? But they also came on the job with him. Because I have his photo on this, I was actually here, I think, when he was sworn in. And I have that photo. And of course, I know two of them personally that have been traumatized by this. And I'm just concerned with their mental health, what are we doing to help them?
So currently, we have one individual that's in charge of our peer support. But the entire department is a great resource for peer support. We have people that are just not dedicated to that, that are assisting and helping and finding avenues with it. When I say that we have that one person that's doing the peer support, a lot of that stuff is private to the point that, I'll be honest with you, I don't even know what's going on, if there is anything going on behind the scenes. My understanding that is, there was, there's some claims that have been filed with workers comp, but to that point, I don't get any, I'm not privileged to it. And I want to support them. If they don't want to come out and say anything that's going on, that's fine, but as long as they're getting the help and having the avenue. But the biggest thing that you guys are doing with that health safety officer is that there's a direct point of contact. There is somebody that is evaluating, seeing what's going on and can reach out to that person in the formal aspect of getting them more help. Not somebody that's sharing multiple job duties. You've identified one person for that and they're now having a ping pong between other stuff. They could focus in on the men and women.
Mayor, let, let me ask you, with, with our clinic, you know, like when they have incidents like this that take place in a school, they bring in a mental health person to accommodate, we, we can do that.
We had, we had a gentleman from UCF.
So Lieutenant Major is the person that set it up as far as, and with Lieutenant Beasley as well. They've identified with UCF restores and had people come in as far as to talk to every firefighter that was involved, talk to all the shifts, but there's so much help out there that's just unknown of. And what I mean by that is, people don't know how to get to it, the resources exist, but if we could dedicate a person to this, they will know every in and now who to call, what phone number to do, instead of it being our first time every time that we have a situation where somebody needs additional help mentally with it.
And so sometimes they want inside help and sometimes they want outside help. So they've got the access to both inside and outside.
Okay.
Chief, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
All right, so that's general fund, that's all in your general fund. You've seen all those expenditures, you've seen everything about us in your general fund. So I want to do a couple other funds I want to show you, big funds that are significant. And then we also have tonight, don't forget, we have special assessments. I don't know if we have any, we may have some homeowners here, I'm not sure. But we do have the special assessment resolution that you have to hear as well tonight, so. On the street side, I'm the streets fund. Your major capital in your streets fund is your 1.8 for street resurfacing in accordance with your street assessment plan that we did. If you recall, we had the street assessment plan that will be coming back to you after the budget's adopted. That will come back to you so you can see the, the second year streets and also what the community, what Public Works has gone to and found other streets based on what we've heard from, from our community and based on that plan where they fall. So you'll see that sidewalks, we talked about that, there's funding for sidewalks, a truck in here. There's also a speed hunt program. And if you recall, this was seven, fifty thousand dollars, we talked about Pam won to put seventy-five because she had some other things. We do have seventy-five in the budget. So it says fifty here, but there is seventy-five in the non-item for her budget.
It shows fifty.
Right, it says fifty here, so it will be updated, but seventy-five, if you remember Pam won additional twenty-five and we, so we were able to find that. The asphalt roller is in here. That is, you know, we bought the asphalt machine, so now we have the roller that goes with it so we can do potholes and fix some of our, our bigger sections of the road in-house. And then your backhoe, we had to replace a motor on the back, backhoe. Revenue in this fund is only a hundred and eight thousand dollars, as all gas tax went up. As you can see, it does not keep up. It's, it's, it's not enough to make it keep up with. It's 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 not enough money to keep up with resurfacing. That's why we've added another million dollars from the rescue. Keep in mind, that's gonna run out and we're not gonna have those dollars. So this is another issue you need to be thinking about. How do we continue that resurfacing program if we don't have the dollars here in the in the gas tax? Now, we are talking about the street light assessment. And like we talked about, if we get a street light assessment C Y, that will free up a big chunk of money that we'll be able to use for resurfacing. That's one of the reasons why we're going through that program. So but but it's important to keep that in mind as well. So you can see that the streets fund is balanced at six million, a little more than six million dollars in revenue and six million dollars in expenses. So it's balanced at um, right at six million, a little more than six million dollars. And that's the streets fund. And that's a seven percent increase over the last year. It also includes tree trimming, sidewalk repair, traffic signs, there's money in here for signs, for striping. So all of those programs, the funding is still available for all those programs going forward. Impact fee funds, real fast, I'm I'm going to pick just a couple of the big ones. Transportation is one of the big ones in this one. It's a fourteen percent increase from last year or eight point five million dollars it's balanced at. You have harming road extension. There's some additional funding for harming road extension. Oh, Kolea Popka Road widening. Um, there's money in there to be able to help with with um, portions of that. As we, keep in mind that we're doing this hand in hand with developer. So some of this is, you know, they'll put their portion in, we'll do our portion. Traffic lights as Pam gets those developments. Kelly Park widening. We're going to be studying Kelly Park widening. New signals. Four forty-one signal improvements. As you know, um, Bradshaw, that's an intersection where we're looking at putting up a new um, traffic light. Vic Road and Lester, it's already under construction, but this is some additional construction to finish that out because of those prices have come out a little higher than what what we've estimated. So there's some funding to finish that one. Sandpiper sandpiper realignment and new signal. She has construction money in here for that intersection and we'll still start that. That, um, she's done that design, so this will be able to put funding for construction. Park Avenue and Fitz intersection, improvement designs. If you notice here, we don't have a walk, crosswalk here. We're looking at putting a crosswalk here at Park and Fitz, which is everything that we have coming in. So she's going to do design for that. Um, new trails, design and construction. So she's put some money in here for some additional trails to connect. They're doing a one with CRA, but this will provide additional funding so we can do improvements and make some connections for trails in other areas outside the CRA. New sidewalks, design and construction. You can see we have six hundred thousand dollars. This is the money that we're going to be able to help us to use for new sidewalks that we've talked about. And Pam's reviewing those with Public Works. And so they will be able to come back with a plan. But we have funding to be able to add some new sidewalks in certain places. So um, you can see that impact fees are showing a fifteen percent increase for residential and thirty-five percent increase in commercial.
And and that sidewalk doesn't include the the big grant we've got.
No, that's a separate.
Another million dollars there.
We have a million dollars for sidewalks that we have in our CRA. Um, South of Popka CRA area, we're putting over a billion, a million dollars in improvements in all those sidewalks. That's a separate, that's a grant that we received in a different fund. I'm going to kind of, I'm going to do fire because fire and police are very similar. As you know, we are getting ready to start to design a public safety complex. And if you recall from your presentation, the design was over four million dollars just to design that building. So we're using a couple million from each one of these funds to help do that design for that building. Cause we have to get that started, as you know. I think she said design would take twelve to fourteen months to design it and then come back and we would do construction. That will give us time also to 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 put the financing together, to come to you and 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 bring you the financing package.
You weren't.
For that construction.
Arctic sexual design from Firehouse. How have you already got done that?
We, that for six, we did that. So six is done, you'll see groundbreaking for six soon. This is for the actual public safety complex, the new fifty-three million dollar complex that you'll have. The design.
And Station One will get a new house also.
Station One and Police Department will all go and and um, the E O C and dispatch and I T will all go into that building, brand new. And it will be designed, well, it was, you saw it. It was designed for fire, to house all the equipment for fire. So it was, um, and that's what, this will be here. This will be designed and you'll get to see.
The red light.
This will come back and you'll see the design before we go to construction. So you'll get to see everything in the design um, of this building.
And and while they're in the design phase, since we're talking about these additional firefighters, can we make sure that that's included at this time during that design?
Um, Commissioner, we have, we recently just hired two architects that we're putting on board. So I think what we do, it might be a good idea to have them kind of give us a review of our stations to give us an estimate of what and what would look like, design estimate of what it would look like to expand those stations or build new stations. Keep in mind, some of those stations are built on small lots too.
I know.
So we're, it's gonna take, somebody's gonna have to actually, it's gonna take a a good person, an architect, to come in and review the footprint, review the space. There's restrictions on how many people you can have in a building. It works in a fire department too, it won't have so many in that space. So it's a, that's a process and that will take, you you have to have a professional design before you can do construction. I mean, sometimes, you know, we beat ourselves up because we're like, well, we're just adding on a building, adding on a slide. Why do I have to have a design? You can't build, you can't do construction, get permits if you don't have design and design, some design is one of your biggest pieces. You know, cause even with the public safety complex, I almost fell on my chair when they told me it was gonna be four million dollars just to design it. I'm like, wow, we can build two more stations for that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. While while they're doing the design, can they go ahead and incorporate for the additional personnel? Why why are they doing?
They will in this one, in this Station One. Oh, yeah, it will be in this one.
All right.
Definitely. So you can see that um, there's no grants. And I will tell you this, we are, we are really beating up Chief Wyllam and um, Chief McKinley. We are beating up everybody for grants because we are trying, if we, we, we don't care. If you want to give us five million for design, if you want to give us two million to go to our fifty-three million, we don't care. We're hearing there may be some. So I will tell you, they are really working hard trying to beat down everything they can to see if we can get some help with this building. Cause it's one of the biggest buildings we've ever built. So they are working hard um, try to find some help. Cause you know, if we, every little bit we have is um, less strain on our impact fees and our our um, debt that we have to issue. Utility impact fee. These are big, I'm just gonna hide some of the big ones. You've heard these from the workshop. But we have the Northwest um, expansion for um, the plant, the the tank that we're building, the addition of one point five million. This is a grant that we're getting from um, um, federal government, from um, from Gimming's office. So this is a, um, this is some some great help that she's able to provide for us or help us with. Um, there's some high-speed pump additions. There's um, Golden Gem sixteen inch line. We're having to, our our water, our water treatment plants, our water plants, at Grosse and Barker, we're having to do well replacement and big addition to go further into the aquifer. So this is a compliance issue. So as you know, we're, and if you recall, we um, we're funding part to impact fees because we're allowed to use impact fees for capacity improvement. And we're using part of the funding from operating for current rates because people that currently use, get, use it to provide service to them as well. So we're trying to do everything we can to make sure we have good use of both of our funds so it doesn't put a burden off of one, on one or the other so so hard, so. And and here you can see impact fees, fifty percent increase, commercial for sewer, ten percent in water. Keep in mind, we have not, we built this budget before we have the impact fees that you saw tonight because we will bring you back those impact fees and to be adopted. And as you recall, we've talked about a ninety day delay. So by the time those impact fees come out, it may be halfway through this budget. So we didn't want to rely on those. So we're using what we have and what we project based on what we currently have. So based on when those fees hit, we could have some additional revenues that will help with these projects as we move forward. And then um, I'm gonna see, I'll go.
You're going back, huh?
Yeah, I'm gonna go back. So those are the main highlights in that one. So I'm not gonna go over the law enforcement fines, the trust fines. You see those at all of your meetings. Those are basically when the police chief decides he wants to be able to use those dollars for capital improvements or donations. You see those. The grants fund, I'm not gonna go through there. Here's only one item in there, that's the million dollars that we're transferring over for street resurfacing. Um, from the rescue money, the rescue money's in this fund, but it is a, we're taking a million from here to put over into that street resurfacing fund. That's the only item we have in a grants fund. Keep in mind, the grants fund, you'll make adjustments as we're awarded grants. So as we get awarded grants, you'll you'll make adjustments to these funds. Stormwater, real quick. Um, it's only a four percent increase overall right now, or one point one million dollars. There's some money in here for drainage repairs. So there's a little bit of money in here for a vehicle and some drainage repairs because as you know, we had a study recently on our stormwater rates. That's coming back to you real soon. But it won't take effect until the next tax year. Not in twenty-three, but it will come in the twenty-four year. But as you know, Richard and his team are working really hard to get all the plans in place. He has the inventory, he has um, the consultants doing a review. So he'll be able to bring you all of those improvements. And then when we set those rates, you'll have a plan for use of those, increasing those rates. Utility operating fund, this is the next biggest fund, next to general fund. Um, you can see the major cap, it's it's a sixteen percent increase overall or almost thirty-one million dollars in this fund. This does include the rate increase that you recently adopted. Those rates have, we have to have those rates, like she talked about, like Kimmy talked about, in order to make these payments. You'll see there's vehicles in here, there's lift stations. He talked about renewal and replacement, keeping up with those. Um, water main renewals and replacement. And and remember what he said, this fund is for existing infrastructure that we're having to maintain. The infrastructure, the impact fee fund was for new big construction. But like I talked about, the wells for Plymouth Regional and the Northwest Recreation Complex Storage, we're using some of these funds in this one to help and fund from the impact fee together to build the projects or improve the projects because we're allowed to use impact fee fund for capital enhancements based on capacity. So we're gonna use all of the money, we're making sure it's fair between our rate payers and our developers. So that's why you'll see a project might be a percentage of it in this fund, a percentage of it in that fund, to make sure that each person pays their fair share. Nobody's paying more than they should be. Four hundred thousand dollars in utility revenues from the eye. As you've heard, the, he talked about that, those are included in here. That's new revenue going forward. And then the rate state that you recently adopted beginning October one is included in this fund, in this fund. So you can see this fund is balanced at thirty million. There is um, debt service in this fund. I wanted to kind of tell you that as well. If you look down here, you'll see that debt was one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, now at one point two. If you remember, he he talked about, we can use a portion of this utility operating fund to pay for debt on the, on the wastewater plant because we have existing customers that are using it so they can pay a portion of the debt. And then we have impact fees that can be used to pay a portion of the debt because we expanded the wastewater system for new development as well. So he, and and he gave us those numbers from his study to make sure that the rate payers aren't paying anymore for the plant than they should be versus um, a development, making sure development is paying for for um, their portion of that debt as it's come on in impact fees. This also includes from a debt service, um, the eight hundred thousand he talked about. That's in this fund. That's why it had an impact on the, one of the reasons it had an impact on the wastewater rate was because we have that debt service in this fund um, that we're having to pay as well. And we can't pay that, we can't do that to the to the impact fee. We can't use impact fees for that because it's not being used. We can't use impact fees on debt unless they're actually up, it's running and new development is connected and using it. So that's why you see that. But you can see this fund is balanced as well um, at thirty, almost thirty-one million dollars. And then sanitation fund, I think this is the last one I wanted to go over, the big fund. Um, Josh talked about this, it's up twenty-one percent, big increase in this fund. Um, seven million dollars total, eighteen percent in fuel cost. You know, it's tough, it's it's hard to control. But as you heard, um, he has an increased air. He has his new operators, he's had a new position for growth. Um, and then he has his trucks. These are his normal trucks that he adds, just outside of the ones that we had to fire with. That's a different allocation coming from the rescue money. These are just his normal capital to keep up with truck replacement. One of the things I wanted to point out here that he pointed out is very important. I think it's a very good service we're adding to some of our citizens, is the pup truck. That was the truck, if you remember, he talked about, it's a smaller truck so he can get in those areas and and pick up garbage where he can't turn around his big truck. There's some areas that are just, the roads are too narrow, too small and he can't, he struggles turning around the big truck. So this is a small truck that will allow him to be able to take those tight areas and not have to damage or or um, have issues. He also can use this for smaller projects. If I have a small pickup, something's happened, I need to do a small pickup, he doesn't have to run the big truck, he can run the small truck to do small um, small duty. So this is a good improvement that we've added because we have, we have several areas in our population, as you know, alleyways or small areas where it's hard to get the big truck down through there. So this is a addition that he had. And then six percent, as you know, all the rates have been increased by six percent in this fund, um, based on the the study that you saw or that Josh brought, the resolution he brought to you earlier today. So you can see this fund's also balanced um, to zero. So everything, so you can see, all funds are balanced. I'm not gonna go through special assessments for very small funds that took you just to those housing developments. Chuck has some new ones that he's bringing on and he has to have a hearing for this evening. Um, so you'll see, you'll hear those and see those. I will tell you this though, and I have to give Chuck a lot of credit. This is not an easy job. You know, it's tough dealing with people sometimes when you tell them, hey, we're gonna have to assess your property because we're gonna clean up your property for you or help you. because we're gonna clean up your property for you or help you. People don't like that a lot of times, it's a little, it's a little rough, but he's been very successful at that. And as you know, you're starting to see in some of these communities, some of the developments where we don't have homeowners associations, that the ponds are getting kept up and the fences are being maintained. He's done a really good job working with these people, and, um, and these are separate funds, so we can show them, you know, all the money you're paying, we're putting right back into your neighborhood, so you can see it, everything's transparent, it's on the website. So, um, I have to say, he's, um, he's done a really good job. Um, this is something we started years ago, but we never really implemented. We talked about doing it, but we never implemented it. So, but he's done a really good job with that, and you're gonna see some new ones tonight coming up, where we have some places where we've had some retention ponds that were owned by HOA, have never been maintained. Today, they have, they have been cleaned, um, and he's maintaining those. Um, so you'll see that when he comes this evening, so. And that helps, that helps with all of our communities, you know, I mean, so, um, it's, it's, it's almost a service we provide, really. I mean, we provide special assessment, but somebody has to maintain it, and so, um, and it's very important that we're transparent. That's why you have a hearing tonight, so the, the public can see what we're, we're, we're taking your assessment, but where we're giving it back to, and it stays in that fund. So, with that being said, I'll go back to the front side. So, overall, your budget is balanced at $146 million, at your miller's rate of 4.18, um, 7.6. All the positions are funded, the transportation safety position you had is funded. All of your fire improvements, that was a big number, I know it's a big number. We were able to do it this year, which was important to be competitive in the police department. I think you're gonna see significant improvement here, our abilities to be able to, to hire, because we were able to do that. Um, you have the six firefighters coming on, you have a plan, they have a plan for a future plan on adding firefighters. I think it's important that depending, you know, we have, future, where we're looking into the future will depend on how our revenues look, how, how your property taxes look. I hope we have another year like we've had this year, um, because that's what it's gonna take. It's gonna take those kinds of, of revenue generation to add positions and add into the future. So, hopefully, um, you know, we'll continue to see that with the development we have coming onboard. People always say, you know, how do you create, where can we get the dollars? There's really only, it's very tough in the general fund. If you're a property tax, um, or reserve, that's the only two places you really can get big dollars. I will say, I have to commend the staff, and you, as being very good financial, um, being very, very responsible, in that you've allowed us to increase those user fees, as you saw. They add up, they may only create a million dollars, or a million and a half at the end of the day, but also, it takes some of the burden off of the actual taxpayer for services that, if we're providing a service, you didn't pay for that service. So, it's a user fee that by increasing these user fees, the people who are using those services are paying for that fee, instead of having to supplement with, with property tax. I will tell you, over several, over the last few years, by doing that, we have really freed up to where we can use the tax dollars more in certain places like public safety and things like that. Um, ambulance fees, all of those fees, fire inspection fees, the user fees. So, by increasing those, it also helps, because those, that creates dollars that can come in and go right back to fire department. So, I think it's important that we continue to monitor those fees, look at all user fees and stay on top of user fees. As you know, when the economy dips, the user fees dip too, so it's kind of, you know, it's, it's, it's all tied together, but I think it's important that we continue to watch those and monitor those. Um, I've heard some of the stuff you said tonight, so I think what, you know, we can do, I think, um, fire has a big task ahead of them. I think they need to start, they need to go on their training in safety person and quality control. Get them hired, let's get them hired, let's get them on, let's get through that process, because that's important, that's step one. We have to go through that process first, let's get through that process, let's get the new positions hired that we have coming on. Let's look at our stations and see what, what will have to be done, what will that look like, what will it? Because at the end of the day, that's a big piece of it, a big, big piece of it. And so, um, based on renovations, based on expansion, you know, it's gonna be very important that we have that number. What's that number, what are we looking at, so we can plan to make that, make those changes. Um, so I think that's, that's kind of where we go, I think that's where we're headed, I think this is a good budget. And everybody got something in this budget. I know sometimes it's our public works, people think, oh, Public Safety got everything, we didn't get anything. No, they, we were able to give them some things as well, for facilities improvements that we need to make and we need to do. Street improvements, um, our important sidewalks, I think, you know, we were able to fund those. Um, so, I think we've touched just about every service and everything that we have from a funding standpoint. Just keep your fingers crossed that the economy stays pretty good for us, because I think that's gonna be the issue, that will actually determine where we go. Um, and I think, you should be commended, streetlights, I know Commissioner Smith, you were a big proponent of this, but the streetlight study is now getting underway, the stormwater study you have is underway. Actually making sure these funds and these fees are proper and collected properly to be able to fund those functions, so we don't have to, um, use other dollars from the general fund or other places to fund those, those issues. So, I think that, that, um, we're in a good spot. It'll be interesting to see how we go through next year and '23. Um, we'll continue to monitor state revenues, after all, state revenues are a very big reflection of some of the other dollars. If the state dollars do this, sometimes our user fees do that. We're hearing from some developers, they started to slow. So, we'll continue to monitor that and see where, how, you know, um, how, what kind of impact that has on us. But, I will tell you, we've looked at every rate, we've looked at every fee, we will continue to look at them and make sure that we are keeping them up in line with our neighbors, and make sure they're helping to cover the cost, um, of our programs. We've looked at recreation fees, Bradley continues to watch those and monitor those. He has some new fees, um, that he's established and gone through, um, and, um, it's important that he review those very well and go through those. After all, you have to be careful with those, you can bite yourself right out of recreation business if you're not careful. But, this budget is built to be able to do all of our programs, and there's a lot of capital improvement in this budget as well. Um, so, with that being said, um, like I said, I think this is a good budget. Um, I think, you know, we, we, um, we've heard from you, we know kind of what your direction is, what you're looking at, and we will work towards those, those issues going forward.
Any, any questions for Edward?
I just want to thank Edward, because you have done such a tremendous job under the circumstances that you've been under personally. So, I just want to say thank you. Um, you have open, you have an open door. Um, I know that I get in the city hall many times, and you, no matter what you're doing, you stop and you give me the time. So, I just want to say thank you. And knowing that these last months have been your greatest challenge with your health, but you have, this has been your priority and the health, and you've been managing both. I don't know how you did it, but thank you so much for everything that you have done.
You're welcome, thank you very much.
Mr. Bikes?
Echoes for that, and again, just clarity gives us direction.
Mm-hmm.
And that just really helps, you know.
My mic hasn't been on. Somebody texted me, so, again, we've gotten some clarity tonight that helps us be able to look forward. The, the willingness is there when we have the clarity to understand, this is what we need to do, so, you know, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Well, I want to say thanks also to Mr. Bass, for all the work that he puts in to make sure that our city is operating efficiently, and to all the departments that has played a part in preparing this budget. Uh, and, and I'm just, uh, I don't, I don't want to leave here tonight that we've talked about retrofitting these fire stations, and then we come back three months and nothing is happening. So, I'd just like to, to, to say that that's a priority, that, that we need to get that done, to find out what it's gonna take to retrofit these fire stations in order to meet our growing demand. And, uh, and, and I know you probably won't have all of that ready by our next, uh, city council meeting, but, but at, at least by the first city council meeting in October, hopefully, uh, we would have either the architect that's designing the new administration building, take a look at that and bring that back and let us know what that cost is gonna look like, so that we can start moving forward to getting that done.
It won't be that fast.
It won't be that.
It won't be that quick, no. We have architects onboard that we can start talking to and see, and get a timeline from them.
All right.
Um, so we can do that.
Well, let's do that, so we have a report.
We'll get the ball rolling.
So, so that, so the public knows that we're serious about public safety.
But we can get some rough numbers quickly, that's, that's not impossible to do. We can definitely do that. I mean, I do that on my own investment properties. You can call somebody and say, here's the generalness of what I want to get done, give me a million dollar range. Where's it gonna land? I think we can do that, just to put our heads in the right mindset of, hey, we need a budget, $15 million.
And you can do that, the problem is, we're having a problem doing that, because we call someone to come look, and they, the first thing they want, if they want somebody to just, give me the design first. I can't give you a price until I know what design's gonna look like. Are you adding two rooms here, are you adding a room on the back? They can't, they, until we have a design of what, it's like a footprint, what's it gonna fit, what's it gonna look like, they can't really give you a number. They want to see that square footage, they want to see, now, somebody can give you a number and say, hey, it's $10 million. But, but they're still gonna want a design before we can go to construction to make sure it.
Which is fine, but I think having some type of estimate, uh, of just, we, we can do this. I, I don't, to, to Commissioner Smith's point, we don't need to keep kicking this can down the road. Um, this isn't that hard to do, and if I need to start calling contractors and, and, uh, whoever I need to do, I'm happy to do it. I think that's part of our jobs up here, is to alleviate staff who's already overworked as well. You know, every, you guys are all doing your absolute best as well, so, I, I, I think we, that, to echo that sentiment, it needs to be a priority, and I know it's not gonna be a tomorrow thing, but it does need to be.
We'll get the ball on, we, we, we will start and get the plans there and bring you information as quickly as we can bring it to you. Definitely, I mean, I don't want to bring you a number and say $10 million, because you're gonna tell me, well, how much, which place, and how many states? Well, I, I, so I need to know, will that support four on a truck? Will it, will, can, will this site even work? If this site doesn't work, we have to, we're gonna have to figure out where we, you know, where we place stations.
Well, I don't want that either to be the reason we aren't staffing correctly either. I understand that we need to put them somewhere, but at the same time, we need them.
Right.
So, so I chicken or egg thing here, and we need firefighters.
And I agree, but keep in mind, we also can't put 10 in a building to allow occupancy for eight, so we have to be careful.
I mean, we put our students in trailers, we can temporarily put our staff in there while we're redoing buildings. We can do this, I think that's the thing, I, I understand your question, I can hear what you're saying, but.
We have to get the numbers, I, you need the numbers, but you need to know what this number is and how you're gonna pay for it. But we need to get the numbers and the information, if it's the direction you want to go.
That was kind of my, that was kind of my question, I mean, can we do a, a bunkhouse, or does it have to be tied into the station? That's the part we don't know, so give us that information. If we can do something that's quick and temporary, that can move it forward, you know, that's what we need to know.
Right, well, we'll, we'll get the information, we'll, we will get information for you, so.
We're gonna have a very rough meeting, this next budget meeting, if we don't have this fixed in some capacity.
Commissioner.
I don't want to get, I, I hate the, the whole, we had, we'll get a second bite at the apple, we get, we can, we can fix this. This is fixable, and it is fixable sooner rather than later. I understand that it's, hey, we need, I understand there's other priorities that maybe the administration or you guys have, but we can do this. And I'm happy to get in there, I, I can put my own staff on this to make it a priority.
Well, here's what I'm gonna tell you, you set your miller's rate. If you are going to add those kind of dollars to this budget, you better, you don't have to cut. So, you don't have to tell me, where do you want to cut in other areas?
Well, we don't want to cut anything.
Or, or you can go into your reserves.
Correct.
What I'm, what I'm saying, that's what, and then, that's what you can do, but just keep in mind that, you know, where you're sitting, if you borrow from those reserves, how far you can go down. If we have a storm, just be prepared, if I come to you and tell you, I need to borrow money for a storm, just be, just be prepared. That's all I'm saying.
But I'd rather.
We can get you the information and show you what that number roughly is gonna be, I can't promise you, I don't want to stand there and tell you $10 million, when they come back and say, three stations have to be completely built and it's $50 million. I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want to tell you that, so, um, and that may be what the architects have. They may say, hey, Station 3, you gotta build a bigger station, it's not a few minutes, so you're gonna have to find a place to build new one. We'll have to buy land, we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna construct it, how long will it take to build it? Um, as you see, it's taking forever to get six going, but, but we can bring you information, we'll bring you information, but, um.
And, and I guess we, we can, we can do it two ways. Have the architect tell us what it's gonna cost to retrofit the buildings, or if it's possible.
Right.
And also, give us the cost, what it's gonna take to get the temporary housing, and I don't like that word, bunk housing, but temporary housing until we can get it retro, retrofitted. So, if we can have those two, two costs, then we can move forward from there.
Okay, I'll do my best, I don't know if I can do it in four days, but.
Well, I, 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 I gave you until the first of next month.
We'll, we'll get, we'll get information for you, I prom, well, I promise, we'll get information, we'll do what we can.
My one logistic question is, does it have to be tied into alarms and things like that? Or is it as simple as having, you know, that, that's the one question I would have.
Well, I wouldn't want to put our employees in unsafe places.
Well, the architect should tell us that, right?
Right, right.
And isn't Station 6 or temporary Station 6 the equivalent of what we're talking about? So, this is all doable, is the moral of the story, this is totally and completely doable.
Well, yeah, but I don't know, can you put a station, can we put extra building in Station 3? I don't know, I have to find that out, yes, you can put a module in there, no, you can't, I mean, I have to find out.
I understand.
Because, you know, the building department in the day is gonna be the one that also is gonna have to be able to say, yea or nay, you can build here or not build here, add or not add, so I have to make sure. But I will get you the information, I will, I will, will work on it as quickly as I can, so.
All right, well, we'll take public comment, so.
I'll be the first to kick one off. Uh, Kyle Becker, I should, I should say Commissioner-elect Kyle Becker, uh, 1388 Kintler Road. I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but that presentation was an eye-opener, and quite appalling, if you ask me. We've been talking about properly staffing our fire department, not two months, not six months, not two years, really, for the entirety since we've been on council. And the idea that we could sit in these chambers tonight, and this administration has zero insights onto how much it would cost to retrofit our departments, even if we weren't able to staff to the expectations that we all want and to national fire standards, to say that we wouldn't be able to quarter them, and to sit here and say that we have no idea how much it would cost to be able to service those firefighters. Are we kidding? This is maddening, and there's, and I don't quite understand the city administrator's friction when clearly you all want to do something here, and it's not, well, we can allocate $10 million, or we could do this, I'm not sure we can. No, you as a council have the ability to say, no, this is what we're going to do. You all can prioritize the acceleration of getting the capital expenditures to properly retrofit those stations. If it means new stations, so be it, if it means more firefighters, let's do it. You all can work past the deficiency of this administration not to put emphasis on knowing what it's gonna cost to do this. Remember, it takes three votes, three votes only, and I'll see you in November, thank you.
I wasn't gonna speak tonight either, my name's Jeff Tyre, uh, I live at 1120 Leg Drive, Apopka, Florida. Uh, I'm a retired assistant fire chief on this fire department, 32 years of service here. When I started in 1984, we had two people on the fire engines. It's 2022, and there's two people on the fire engines, it's time for a change. The 18 people that Chief Sanchez talked about has to happen. We can't put firefighter safety and community safety aside because of some cramped quarters, that's ridiculous. We're adding, it's budgeted for six firefighters in this budget year, correct? And we're putting them at Stations 2 and 3, correct? Where are we putting them then? What are we doing? We're adding another bed, correct? Why can't we add another bed to Station 4, 5, and 6? Doesn't make sense to me. We have students that ride overnight, correct? They stay at those stations, they sleep in one of those extra beds. Let's put a firefighter in those beds instead of a, a student. That's the clarity that you're looking for here, you just asked for it. Add a bed, we're not talking about retrofitting stations, that's silly. We're talking silly now, we're talking about adding one bed to each one of these stations, 18 people. If we gotta go buy a bed and a chair, let's go buy a bed and a chair. 18 people, our city deserves this, the firefighters deserves this, Austin deserves this, let's make it happen.
Good evening, Sylvester Hall, 3091 Roller Hills Lane, Apopka, Florida. Uh, first of all, I want to publicly apologize to Mr. Duran for having to sit here and listen to this. His son just died. There is no greater calling than life. Safety is paramount. His son just died, and we're arguing over a few dollars, we went in, can't we, while we went in the reserves to get that? But you're saying what we're asking here for the fire department, we can't get, we need to put it off? And then, we are only planning to be mediocre. We're not planning to come up to standard. If there was a greater call for action, there is no greater call than now. To meet the standards, not, not try to get to subpar, it's time to meet the standards. Now, I don't listen to a lot of stuff that we talked about here tonight, and like I say, I cannot be Austin father right now, because we have some serious issues up in here now. I said it before, I said it in his presence, if Austin was my father, I can't speak for him, but I have the best lawyer that money can buy, and I'll come up here and I, I'll buy the city of Apopka. Because I'm listening to all this stuff, if you're gonna investigate anything, if there's an accident in the street, you don't move anything. You wait till the police get there, you wait, and you look at everything in real time. So, if I'm gonna evaluate and I'm gonna make changes for the future, I need to see exactly what happened. You don't move it and go put it somewhere else, I need to see the state that it was in, that way, I know that you're committed to serious change. I commend you for being here tonight, because if I was the mayor, there is no way in H-E-L-L, my fire chief wouldn't be here. No way. So, what I'm saying to you, if you want a clear picture, this is the clear picture. Safety is paramount, and we have a father that's grieving, done lost his son, and we're worrying about money. We're worried about money when we have the money sitting right there in the bank. You compare yourself to all the other counties around, let's be the beacon, let's sit the standard. You can't clean house and you can't evaluate if you're not doing it fairly. You can't clean house and you can't evaluate if you're not doing it with a heart that's for the people. I spoke about. I spoke about loyalty hiring, loyalty staffing, a few weeks ago. To hear we got a guy QA, something that, we just had a major, we just lost a life, and we put the QA job on hold till somebody that we want to get the job can apply for it. There's, I'm a hundred percent for in-house promoting, I'm a hundred percent for it, if the person qualifies for the job. That job should be posted outside, so we can get the best possible applicant, period. That's how we move forward for the city of Apopka, not on loyalty, but the best person for the job. We have to do away with loyalty hiring and loyalty staffing, we have to do away with it. Mayor, and to all the commissioners up here now, it's about leadership. And as Commissioner Becker said, forget them now, not forget them, but it's on you now. You don't heard everything, so you can't say, I don't have a clear idea of what's going on. And if you need to go home and replay this and listen to it, so you can pick up on some of this stuff you missed, because I was sitting back there, and it was making me mad, it was making me angry, it was making me upset. To have this father sit here and have to witness what's going on here tonight. So you want a clear picture, the clear picture is, Mayor, it's time for leadership, commissioner, it's time for leadership. It's time for y'all to make sure that that fire station get everything that they deserve, and every safety violation that need to be corrected, is corrected by the book. By the book, regardless of how it make us look, Mayor, that's when you can move forward, when you do the right thing, in the right perspective. And we talked about this before, I wish you had a window to listen to some of the things I said. Principles matter, ethics matters, procedures matters, rules matter, and we can go on down the list, integrity. But now, this is a big one, your character matter, I'm gonna see how you're gonna respond to this demand, thank you.
I apologize for earlier, I didn't announce my name and my address, I was not aware, and didn't even hear the request, so. I am Mike Duran, my address is eleven five oh four Alamo Court, Clermont, Florida, three four seven one one. I wanted to get everything done in the first meeting, I was afraid on time, I know I was only supposed to have four minutes, and I think I went a little bit over. And I appreciate you guys affording me that. I had everything written down on the computer, what I was gonna say, and everything was formatted in order that I wanted it, and I am so glad that everybody that was here actually had an opportunity to come up here and speak. I think I was under the impression now, even into tonight, that this actually wasn't even open to public speaking, and I am so glad that it was. I'm kinda unaware why it isn't all the time, I don't even live here, and this was good information. So I just kinda wanted to echo, everybody kinda nailed the anger and the frustration and the sadness that our family's been feeling, sorry. Since June thirtieth, we had to witness Austin going through, trying to go through recovery, and we never left him. For eight days, I live in Clermont, I did not go home, I didn't see my wife. I went to my daughter's condo, I stayed up so late, and so long, she had Uber me back and forth to the hospital. I was there long enough to take a shower, and maybe even eat something. The Apopka Fire and Orlando Fire was unbelievable, they were bringing food and everything, and the love and support was amazing. Everybody saw it, right? We didn't. We're upstairs on the fourth floor, in trauma ICU. I saw food coming up, I rarely saw anybody downstairs, because I wasn't there. I didn't realize that the community had rallied behind us, and behind Austin. I really truly thought we were in it alone. And as the days wore on, and Austin had his highs, and he had his lows, and many times, we thought we were gonna lose him. And I called his mom at three o'clock in the morning, panicking, and telling her, she's gotta come down, I think this is it. And miraculously, somehow, I don't know how he did it, he pulled through. And the next morning, the numbers that we wanted to go up went up, and the numbers we wanted to go down went down. We never, never ever, we never thought he would not survive. We knew that he would, even when he got transferred to the fifth ward, the CCU. He was hooked to sewing machines, it was impossible for us to stay. There was no room, literally, no room. We could stand very, very close to his bed, and still be in the way of the nursing staff. It was the only times that he was ever left alone, and then again, only for minutes, we stayed in the quiet room. Austin went down for a CT, we had a good night, Thursday night. The unit came to the hospital, and they presented us with the, with the wrestler's belt. And the goal was for Austin to wear this belt when he walks out, like Ric Flair. It's a beautiful belt, I still have it. We kind of celebrated that night, we thought that Austin was doing very well. I have a picture, we actually smiled. And then Friday was just another day. And that was the end for Austin, Friday night. I just want you guys to know the impact when people speak from the public, and know that Austin was a person. And this is not, not like any other budget. I don't believe that any of you had ever experienced. This is not just some twenty twenty-one budget, and we're trying to fix some streetlights, and we want to fix some sidewalks. This is different, we're talking about growing up in the eighties, and where Apopka is today, times have changed. We talked about schools earlier, times have changed. Music ordinance, knocking on a door and asking a neighbor, hey, can you turn the music down? And you're right, can we do that today? Times have changed. We've all changed. The way that we handled this budget this year needs to change. And I can assure you, and I visit Austin all the time, I literally saw him that Thursday, on the thirtieth. Twenty minutes, I get a phone call that he's in the hospital. I literally saw him, spoke with him, I hugged him, I kissed his sweaty neck, and I told him, be careful, kid. I still had the text to this day, when he texts me back, thanks, Pops, he's proud that I came over. He is a person, and he's gone. And not just him, me, and his mom, and his sister, that now grows up alone. She'll get married, I hope, one day, and Austin won't be there. Myself and her mom, our day will come to an end. And his sister will have to attend that funeral by herself. It's very important that we do something this year. I applaud you guys for not wanting to wait, why? Fill the firehouse up, I don't care where they sleep, they're firemen, they don't care either. They don't care, they will sleep on top of the building. So I know them, I visited Austin all the time, I still go to the stations. Eighty firefighters, eighty, eight zero, have reached out to me. And to your question earlier, yes, a lot of them are getting help, and they reach out to me about that too, and I applaud them for that. This is the time, Austin is making history in Apopka. I don't believe this city has ever lost a firefighter in the line of duty. Austin, I believe, is the first. We pray he's the last. He will forever be in Station Number One. That's history now. And you have the opportunity to create history. It was big, you saw the community, you saw the procession, you saw the service, you see the people that are reaching out, it is big. And your decision now is big, please find somewhere in the budget to accommodate Apopka Fire. We cannot, we cannot do this again. We can't, if we don't do something, there'll be another father broken forever, that will be standing before you or another committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
Anybody else?
All right. We'll look for a motion to, I mean, we can't, can't put it off, we gotta have a first reading, and we can change the, the second reading if there's things we want to change, but.
So, Mayor, you have to vote for a budget tonight, you have to, you have to give me some number, or something to budget with tonight. You can make adjustments between now and next week, so we can make adjustments, but I have to have some budget tonight, because I have to advertise, that there will be a second budget hearing.
So can we approve this budget with an addition of fully funding eighteen additional firefighters, however we find the money, whether it's from reserves?
Um, well, yeah, you can probably do it that way, what I would prefer to do is adopt this budget, because this is what we've advertised, with the direction of, go back and look for this, between now and the next hearing on Wednesday. And then, and we can make adjustments, you can adjust the budget, you can't adjust the military. Down, you can't go up, so we won't, we won't have that, but you can tell me, you can't move the military up.
Not the military, why can't we just approve it with the eighteen firefighters budgeted now, why do we have to wait till the following?
Well, you have to give me time to calculate, so you have to give me time to be able to calculate that number, so I can bring you back the number, the new number, the overall budget, I have to change all the schedules from the general fund to the overall budget, because I have to advertise this in the paper on Sunday. But I can change, just because of whatever, what I advertise on Sunday, is we can add, you can adopt, you're gonna adopt the final budget next Wednesday, and that will be the number. So it can be more or less than what you, what we're at right now.
I'd rather not push it off till next week, why don't we just set the expectation now?
I mean, this, like I said, this is not the final, they're not, they're not, you won't set the final until next Wednesday. So you can, this is tentative, so you can adopt a tentative, and then you can give me direction to come back next Wednesday, with adding eighteen, or twelve, or.
What would be twelve?
It would be twelve, wouldn't it be twelve, because we've added six?
Well, I, I understand what, I understand what you're saying, because if we don't adopt it tonight, we don't know what the additional figure is tonight. So what we can do is adopt the budget as is tonight, and then give you direction at the next budget hearing to have whatever that additional cost is.
Correct.
That's correct, okay, if that been the case, I'll move that we adopt the budget.
With the direction?
Motion by Commissioner Smith.
No, I don't need you, just give me the direction to bring that back, that will be an adjustment at your next hearing, whatever that number.
So I need to do that before I make the motion? You make the motion, and the motion passed, and we give you direction to bring back that figure?
All you need to give me is, you need to adopt that budget, this budget number, one forty-six, two ninety-eight, that's what I need.
Okay.
And then you give me direction, ever, come back to the next meeting with that number, and then you will determine if you're gonna add it into the final.
Before we vote on that.
How many are we asking for, eighteen or twelve?
I think you want twelve additional, right?
Well, I think it's six already in the budget, so we need twelve more. Yes.
Are you, I feel like I can, it's a twelve meeting, are you guys agreeable to that next week?
Yeah, I mean, can we not just say that because we, we don't have the specifics, we have to pass this as is, but that our direction is that we will not pass it next week without that included? Does that satisfy that need, you know, because I don't know how else to do it, literally.
What will hap, so what will happen is, you have a budget now, that's been presented, I have to have a vote on that budget to advertise, that's not final, that's why I call it tentative. You will set the military rate and the final budget next Wednesday, that's final. So next Wednesday, you give me the direction to bring back those twelve, I will bring back the number and a budget that has those twelve, and all additional costs, whatever it takes to make those twelve work, and then you will have to vote on that, and that will be your final budget.
So that we say, and you've made a motion for that, I'll second that with the intention that we won't pass something that doesn't include it, so.
And let me also say that if, if that's not presented to us, and if you think today will be a long meeting, it'll be a much longer meeting next week, so.
Well, and that, so what will happen is, I will bring you that budget back, and you will either vote on it or not vote for that budget, so, yeah.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Banks, and all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up, we've got the Resolution twenty twenty-two.
Well, can, can we go ahead and give him the direction now?
He's got it.
I know, I'm okay, but not.
Okay.
All right, Chuck.
Okay, so where are we going now, back to?
Mine is quick to use in there.
Here we are.
Madam Clerk, if you read the titles, please.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-six, a resolution for, of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting a non-ad valorem tax assessment role for the West Kelly Park Street Lighting District, providing direction to the Finance Director for certification and transmission of the assessment role to the Orange County Tax Collector, and providing an effective date.
Mayor, City Council, and Chuck, fabric of the administration, what you see before you is requests for, by state statute, we have to have two public hearings to set the rate for this particular assessment area, which have before you is the West Kelly Park District, currently, there's one development going in there, that's the Golden Orchard, with two additional that'll follow through at a later date, the rate to be set for this is one seventy-four oh five, that'll be assessed annually. It was notified on their trim notice, as well as in the local newspaper, and on the city's website. So the request tonight is, first reading of the resolution with the holdover for adoption at the next council meeting.
Okay, look for a motion.
Any questions?
Okay, we need a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-six. Some who. Got a motion by Commissioner Banks, and a second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-seven.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting an ad valorem tax assessment role for the Wending, Winding Meadows Street Lighting District, providing direction to the Finance Director for certification and transmission of the assessment role to the Orange County Tax Collector, and providing an effective date.
Mayor, Council, this is for the Winding Meadows subdivision, this is on the east side of the four twenty-nine, located right there at Appy Lane. The rate to be set for this particular street lighting district is one sixty-eight ninety per household, it was put on the trim notice, put in the newspaper, and on our website. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chuck, anybody from the audience want to speak on this one? If not, close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-second.
Sure.
Hold over for a second. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting an ad valorem tax assessment role for the Level Terrace Neighborhood Improvement District, providing direction to the Finance Director for certification and transmission of the assessment role to the Orange County Tax Collector, and providing an effective date.
Mayor, Council, this is for Neighborhood Improvement District, which takes the Level Terrace Neighborhood into effect. The HOA abandoned itself by allowing its corporate papers to expire, there currently is. There currently is no HOA. They've abandoned the pond, and we're having to take it over to maintain and service the pond. I did put in your PACS a tentative budget of what the money will be spent on, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Chuck? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve Resolution 2022-38, first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2022-39.
A resolution of the City of Apopka, of the City Council of the City of Apopka, adjusting an advalorem tax assessment role for the Main Avenue Villa subdivision, providing direction to the Finance Director for certification and transmission of the assessment role to the Orange County Tax Collector and providing an effective date.
Mayor, Council, this is a current HOA, or excuse me, a current Neighborhood Improvement District that was created in 2014. The initial creation was to put the wall in along Main Avenue as in the state. That wall was put in. We should be, the city advanced the money on, on this particular neighborhood. This year, we'll be meeting that obligation, so this is going to allow me to back that particular assessment down from the 490 to 350, which will continue to maintain the retention ponds and also put some money aside for the future painting of the wall, which we'll have to do about every eight to 10 years. So we will, we'll be reducing the rate from the initial rate of 490 to 350. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chuck?
But I, I remember when you did that wall. We're almost coming up on 10 years or eight to 10 years.
We are. It actually, it was, the Neighborhood Improvement District was created in 2014, so...
I remember when you did that. So has it been assessed to say that we need to paint that wall within the next two years?
That's why I've reduced that rate to allow the money to continue to add up, to paint the wall and to maintain, so there will be some reserves there.
Okay.
Any other questions for Chuck? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve Resolution 2022-39 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen, all those in favor. All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Just for the record, Mayor, I need to, on the Level Terrace, I didn't proclaim the rate of $300 for that assessment, and I just want to put that on the record for Level Terrace, that the rate is $300 per household.
So the only thing with the, with the retention pond, so we're, it's a continuous maintenance for us. So how does that, how do the residents get?
They get assessed on their tax bill, so they'll pay the fee on their tax bill under their special assessments. And then we put that in a trust fund, and all that money is transparent, it's only used for their particular development, just like we do with street lighting.
Okay. Thank you very much.